All right. Okay, and welcome to the June 9th, 2020, regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Heardman is currently absent.
All right. We will go straight into public comments on non-agenda items. If you have public comments, please step forward.
Members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. I believe the agenda says this is agenda and non-agenda comments, and this appears to be the only opportunity the public has to comment on item 12, which you'll be discussing when you come back at a closed session. And I would like to address the first bullet under item 12. It asks the council to direct staff to research and prepare a resolution supporting a council, a county action, to declare houses of worship to be essential services. This strikes me as the use of taxpayer resources to promote religion. I believe it's completely contrary to the founding principles of this country and this state. Some may think that this action would be okay because it favors all religions equally, with no preference to one over another. But I would remind you that the constitutions that you have sworn to uphold prohibit government action to establish not just a religion, but to establish religion in general. I firmly believe that government and religion should be kept totally separate, and that this proposal is not a proper action for a city council to take. Thank you.
Thank you. Fair point. It's agenda and non-agenda for the closed-session area items. So if anyone else has public comment at this time, go ahead, please.
I think I'm supposed to speak now. Hello, thank you for giving me the opportunity to express.
So if you could just lean into the mic just a little bit more, we'd be great.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I was asked to speak about short-term lease rental property, experience of living next door to it. So thank you for giving me the opportunity. Sorry, I'm super nervous. My husband and I purchased and built a dream home about 20 years ago. Couple of years later, my neighbor, a sweet old gentleman, passed away, and the home was sold. The new owner lives in Pennsylvania and made a home into a short-term lease income property. Ever since then, neighborhood has become a little bit of a mess. Ever since then, the new owner does not care about our family-oriented neighborhood at all. We have dealt with weekly renters for almost 20 years. Years ago, I was asked to speak in front of a city council meeting once, years ago, by the request of Newport Beach Police Department, when they were trying to get a stiffer fines for a party house passed through the city council. I was happy to do so because for a couple of years, the new relief we received was from the police department. Once I spoke in that meeting, I met a gentleman, his name is Steven Rosensky, who was kind enough to get involved with the situation. Him and the police helped so much. He made a huge impact in our life for the first time for the better. Prior to that, I have tried to call code enforcement and dealt with Matt Cozyline, who was a code enforcement officer for my area at that time. We felt we were getting nowhere until we were introduced to the police officer who was in charge of the party houses. I wish I could remember his name. I kind of think of him as a saint. Couple of years later, it was a business as usual, and the short-term lease property owner had no regards for anyone again. I was asked this time to speak of what my daily experience is like living next to a short-term lease rental property. So here we go. I remember one time, the renters threw a used condom onto my barbecue. We constantly have to pick up cigarette butts that was thrown into my property. While having a dinner with my 88-year-old mother, a football was thrown onto the dinner table, and all the dishes were smashed, and the dinner was wrecked. My husband, being an anesthesiologist, he's up very early in the morning. It is commonplace for my husband to wear an earplug to go to bed, and when that does not work, and he's awakened by the neighbors again, he would have to leave his own bed and go into a bedroom farthest away from the renters to try to sleep at night. Just last night alone, I had to ask the renters to please-
It's okay, you can finish. Go ahead.
Please keep the noise down at 11:00 PM, and again at midnight. Finally, at 12:30, when I asked again, there was a confrontation. I did not want to call the police, especially since the police department is so busy dealing with all the crazy things that's happening in the world right now. They have been doing such a wonderful job. We felt very safe during this difficult time. And then at 5:00 AM, my husband had to get up to go to work. While under stay-at-home, state mandated order was in place. They had a huge party, numerous ones, on their patio. There was no social distancing rule that applied at all to them. My daughter and my son-in-law, who was staying with us from San Francisco, left fearing for their safety. My son-in-law suffers from autoimmune disease. My mother, who's 88 years old, cannot come over to visit us due to the number of people staying next door. Couple of weeks ago, there was a police raid on this property. All of a sudden, more than a dozen police officers with their guns drawn, wearing bulletproof vests and search warrants at hand stormed the house and arrested the tenants. It was truly a scary event. It was the first time I was able to see my granddaughter since the pandemic started. With sadness, I sent her away due to safety. I'm a full-time resident, and I am fearful to live there. I was told they confiscated drugs, guns, and tenants had a long-term criminal history. We do live in a nice neighborhood, and the rest of us in this area have been full-time residents for over a decade. This home has brought so much uncertainty to our neighborhood. I'm asking, please help. Recently, I have been in contact with Diane Dixon and the West Newport Beach Association, and Joy Brenner. They have been so helpful. I feel for the first time in a very long time, someone cares and wished to help again. It feels wonderful being heard again. Is there any way possible to somehow take away their short-term rental permit? I'm sure if they rent it out to yearly tenants, the neighborhood would be a much safer place to live. The home is extremely run down and really only attracts trouble. This has been this way for so many years.
Okay, if you could wrap it up, please.
Thank you. Have a hear me, and I'll pray for change.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Mr. Harp.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. The city council adjourned a closed session, discussed item 3A, which is the existing litigation entitled Susan Riddle versus City of Newport Beach.
All right, we'll stand at recess until 5:30 regular meeting. Thank you very much. Good evening, and welcome back to the June 9th, 2020, regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Harp, do we have a closed-session report?
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. There's no closed-session report this evening.
All right, thank you very much. So at this time, we will stand for the invocation from Derek Davis from the Second Church of Christ Scientists in Corona del Mar, followed by a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Brenner.
Is that me? Councilmembers, city staff, and guests, thank you for inviting me here tonight. This is the first time for me to deliver an invocation, so I appreciate your patience and forbearance. My name is Derek Davis. I'm a member of Second Church of Christ Science Newport Beach, located at 3100 Pacific View Drive in Corona del Mar. My family has resided in Newport Beach since 1967. Christian Science is a religion based on the Bible and the writings of Mary Baker Eddy, the discoverer and founder and only pastor of the church. I would like to use Moses as a biblical example of turning to a higher source to find practical answers to seemingly unsurmountable problems. As you may know, Moses, as the founder of the monotheistic belief, or belief in one God, lived more than 3,000 years ago, and is an important prophet of God to the religions of Judaism, Christianity, Islam, and Baha'i. Moses led the children of Israel out of the slavery, prejudice, and bondage of Egypt. In the 40 years that the Israelites wandered in the desert, Moses promised to deliver them to the land of milk and honey. He faced tremendous challenges of pestilence, dissent, attacks, internal fighting, insurrections, lack of food, lack of water, all resulting in serious challenges to his leadership. In each of these challenges, Moses rose to the occasion by accessing a greater power than his own. In this current situation that we have today with many challenges, I would like to use Moses as an inspiration of decision-making under very stressful situations by relying on a power bigger than ourselves. Acknowledging that in the natural world, there is a power that may not be visible to the five physical senses, but is always, can always be relied on to provide real-life, practical solutions in our day-to-day lives, including the operations of our beloved city Newport Beach, gives us a mental buoyancy and the internal peace to make meaningful, methodical decisions. The same power, that same power is present right here tonight with the council as they engage in the city's business. Mrs. Eddy expressed this concept more than 100 years ago in this way, and I quote, "One infinite God, good, unifies men and nations, constitutes the brotherhood of man, ends wars, fulfills the scripture, 'Love thy neighbor as thyself,' annihilates pagan and Christian idolatry. Whatever is wrong in the social, civil, criminal, political, and religious codes, equalizes the sexes, annuls the curse on man, and leaves nothing that can sin, suffer, be punished, or destroyed." In closing, I would like to quote from the sixth tenant of the Christian Science Church, which is a prayer that members use to assist in governing the affairs of the institution. And I quote, "We solemnly promise to watch and pray for that mind to be in us, which was also in Christ Jesus, to do unto others as they would have them do unto us, and to be merciful, just, and pure." Thank you, and blessings.
Thank you. That was beautiful. Would everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
The city council of Newport Beach encourage, welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
All right, now is the time for city council announcements and oral reports from city council on committee activities. Mr. Heardman.
I have nothing, once again.
Don't blame you. Ms. Dixon.
I have nothing. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Duffield. Mr. Muldoon.
I would just like to say that Newport Beach Police, Fire, Orange County Sheriff's, Coast to Mesa, I believe, was involved, Seal Beach Police, did an amazing job working with protesters to protest peacefully. I know there's tons of hours spent. Chief, thank you so much for your amazing leadership. It's getting praise even from those who participated in the peaceful protest, and our hats are off to you. If there's ever a time for a stay-inovation, it would be now, but it's all staff, so it seemed kind of canned. But you are worthy of that, sir, and your team. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner.
I agree with Kevin. Thank you so much, and we were so proud of the people who represent our community during that time. I did meet with the homeless task force, and at a future meeting, our chief, John Lewis, will be bringing our new homeless liaison officer to meet us. Her name is Cynthia Carter, and she, we're really excited about having her help us solve the homelessness problem in Newport Beach. I also wanted to announce that there was an arrest of a homeless person who had an altercation at Smart &amp; Final in Corona del Mar, and he was arrested and is in custody, and so there's been a lot of chatter on Next Door about that, and I just wanted to assure everyone that that had happened. We had lots of excitement in Corona del Mar this week. We had a major, pretty major fire down on Ocean Boulevard and Marguerite. It was started by a welder working on a construction project next door, and the lady who lives next to this project warned him several times that he should not be welding during a wind, a wind event such as we were having. And so the reason I wanted to talk about that is that I spoke with our chief, Fire Chief Boils, and it's really important for people to understand that if they see something dangerous, they really do need to report it. And we have a fire marshal in the city of Newport Beach, and his name is Kevin Bass. And if you see something that you think is a dangerous situation, let him be the one that determines whether this activity should be stopped or not. So please call in if you see something like that happening, and also if you ever feel threatened about a homeless person that is nearby, as several people indicated that they had in this case, please make sure that you call our police department, and they will be very responsive. The third thing is, I had some complaints of graffiti in Corona del Mar, and it's also really important that you report graffiti to the city of Newport Beach because we're very proactive about getting out there and getting that taken care of because we know that one incidence of graffiti leads to more. So just please call us. Call us whenever you need to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Avery. And I have none either. So we'll go into matters which council members have asked to place on a future agenda. I do need to clarify the one that I had asked to put on. There should be a little bit of an addendum there, so it would be resolution supporting and commending Hoag Hospital for their leadership and effort during the coronavirus, and support ownership independence. I do want to make sure that that second part was on there. Okay, we'll go with the first, which is resolution in support of the county's action determining houses of worship to be essential services. All those in favor of bringing this back at the next council meeting, please raise your hand.
That was unanimous.
All right. The second is a review of the junior lifeguard program for summer 2020, brought by Mr. Muldoon. All in favor of bringing that back at the next meeting, please raise your hand.
That was also unanimous.
And then the third is resolution supporting and commending Hoag Hospital for their leadership and effort during the coronavirus pandemic, and support of ownership independence, brought by me. All in favor of bringing that back at the next council meeting.
Also unanimous.
All right, thank you. So Madam Clerk, on the public comments. I'm sorry, on consent. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Brenner, go right ahead.
I just wanted to indicate that I have asked our city manager to bring back the Enson School project at a future council meeting for us to talk about. We have a lot of our parks commissioners that are very concerned about the tree issue there, and we have some other citizens that are very concerned about the traffic issues surrounding that school, so that will be brought back to a future council meeting.
All right. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 10. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Okay. Mr. Heardman.
I have none.
Ms. Dixon.
I have none.
Mr. Duffield. Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, quite a few, Ms. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Prior business employment conflict related to item number three due to my prior employment with telecommunications. Similar conflict to be lodged on item number eight. Same thing, prior employment in telecommunications, and this has a telecom component. That is it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Brenner.
I don't need to pull item five, but I just do need to clarify for for people that are police, I had a meeting today with city manager Grace Leung and Police Chief John Lewis, and Director of Public Works, Dave Webb, about 4th of July and the traffic impacts on various parts of our community. And I was concerned that we didn't have any specific closures allowed in Corona del Mar, where we have bumper-to-bumper traffic generally during that time. So I was assured by them that our police chief has the right, under emergency circumstances, to close any streets as necessary. So if it does become problematic, as it has in the past, he certainly can do that. And the emergency vehicle access is one of my biggest concerns because I was stopped at a signal at Iris and PCH when the fire truck was trying to get to the fire at Marguerite and Ocean Boulevard, and he had to go on the wrong side of traffic and maneuver through a strange intersection to get back on the right side of the road. And so I'm very concerned about when we have bumper-to-bumper traffic in Corona del Mar, whether emergency vehicles can get through. So anyway, but I've been assured by Chief Lewis that he can close roads as necessary.
Okay. Mr. Avery. I have none either. All right, Mr. Avery, do we have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move the balance of consent calendar with no items pulled by the council members, and with recusals from Councilmember Muldoon on items three and eight, and with an amendment to item, amendments to item one, the minutes.
All right, do I have a second? We'll go seconded by Ms. Dixon. All right, we'll go to public comment on this. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. First, if I've never done that before, I wanted to let you know that the timer in the community room is blank, so the speakers here don't know when the three-minute limit is coming up. The beep comes kind of as a surprise to them. You may want to cut them a little slack, and I assume if anybody calls in, they have no idea how much time they're taking. My comment on the consent calendar is very brief. And this is perhaps partly a budget comment, but I had a question about item number eight, which is the approval of a construction management contract for the new Lido Fire Station. The staff report says that the funding for this contract, which is $371,000, there is sufficient funding for that in the capital improvement program. But I thought from your previous meetings, I had heard that the fire station construction itself is going to be financed, which means we would be borrowing money to pay for that. I'm not quite sure why. So I'm wondering if it is correct that the money for the construction manager is in the budget, but the actual money for the construction he will be managing is not yet and relies on borrowing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the community room first? Okay, we have a call. All right, if you're on the phone, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name's Randall English. I'm from Newport Bay Conservancy. I'm here to speak to item six on the just-approved consent calendar. Voice port. I also would like to thank councilors who helped staff parts of recreation, Public Works, getting us to this point, any finding, producing high-quality work. I think you made the Conservancy raise our game a bit. Keep up. One point, we follow monitoring biologists, and actually working on burnout land right now, one where you have, we have the panic, it hammers away. So as to, we are very certain that the ground burned as thick as possible. We have our biologists ready, so when August comes, we'll be monitoring that. I'd also like to talk separately upon the marches that have been held in Newport. And I would like to interrupt that I've took place in a couple of the for along the bay, because that's my gig to beg. And say, both the marchers were very, very polite, well behaved, and as always, the fleet were petful and courteous, and it was really well done by both sides. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Do we have any other calls in? No. All right, we'll bring it back then. So at this time, we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Brenner. Motion carries unanimously, seven-zero.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll take public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any in the community room?
Good evening. Mayor O'Neill and council members, my name is Kate Malouf, and I am speaking to you this evening as one of the city's parks, beaches, and recreation commissioners. Last week, on June 2nd, at our monthly PBNR meeting, it was brought to our attention by Newport Beach residents during public comments on non-agenda items that several trees in the city's parkway on Cliff Drive would be taken out due to a fencing project by Newport Mesa Unified School District at the Enson Intermediate School. I would like to ask this, excuse me, I would like to ask this council, please to put this on a future agenda, a future agenda, or recommend it to our commission for further review. Thank you, Councilwoman Brenner. It is my understanding that the school district has approved a plan and plans to move forward with the construction immediately. This plan will decimate the topography and vegetation of Cliff Drive and throughout the Cliff Haven Newport Heights neighborhood. It is also my understanding that our commission should take notice of these city trees and the inventory, as we did for the trees on Marine Avenue, and advocate to help find a compromise. I am aware that the city staff proposed an alternative plan to the school district, which clearly was not given serious consideration. I would ask that this council does whatever it can to halt this portion of the project on Cliff Drive until an appropriate compromise is reached between the city, the school district, and the taxpayers that support both. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner Malouf. Any other public comments in the community room? All right, seeing none, do we have any? Okay, we do. If you're in the community room, we're going to take a call, and then I'll come right back to you. Hi, if you're on the phone, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Lori Bowman, and I want to speak in favor of short-term rentals on Newport Island. Our family has had property on Newport Island for over 90 years, and I share the property with my siblings. And none of us currently live there full-time, so we use the family for, we use the home for family get-togethers. But we also rely on rental income periodically to help cover expenses for the maintenance of the home. We have repeat tenants who are very respectful of the neighbors and our property. We don't feel it's fair to allow other homeowners in Newport to rent on a short-term basis, but not allow it on Newport Island. The homes across bay from us can rent to short-term tenants because they are not on the island, so again, it doesn't seem fair that they can receive rental income and we cannot. We do understand the need to temporarily prohibit short-term rentals here due to COVID-19, but now that the ban was lifted on May 20th for the rest of the city, we would like to respectfully request that the ban be lifted on Newport Island. We feel this is fair to all homeowners in Newport Beach. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other calls in? Yep, okay. Hi, if you're on the phone, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Charlie Eaton, and I live on Newport Island on 3711 Channel. And I've owned the property for almost 30 years now, bought it because it was an R2, and did have the potential for long and short rentals. And I was a little disappointed that I got a notice that that was being temporarily terminated, and I just found it odd that they could find me to notify me. I couldn't do something, but the council couldn't find me to notify me that there was indeed even an issue. I then did call our councilwoman, and she explained to me that the homeowners association had come to her, and I've got to tell you, the homeowners association, I'd been on that island like a kid for 30 years, off and on. It's really a decorating committee, and it really just kind of dissipates. It's really a decorating committee, and it really just kind of dissipated until this gentleman decided he was going to resurrect it. Good for him. He named himself president and then also appointed a board of seven. Not saying that they're not good people, and I'm sure they represent some people, but I think one has to be careful for them being the voice of the island. I have gotten together our 13 other landlords who have short-term rentals, and we very much would like some in-person meetings with those in the decision-making process because we feel that our voice needs to be heard too. I mean, one of the issues that we have, and we talked to a few of the neighbors, is they say, well, parking's a problem on the island. Yeah, it is, and in all of Newport Beach, too. And I kind of told them, well, the parking thing is a little intellectually dishonest because half the time, my place isn't rented, which means there is zero cars associated with that unit. And that's 50% of the time, actually, a little bit more. Their other concern was, and it's my concern when I'm there too, is partying and noises and all of that. I kind of don't think it's only short-term rental people who have people over and party. When I really kind of got down into the weeds with my neighbors, what they were most upset was that there was no enforcement. And I would be upset, too. And if there's a loud noises going on late at night and the police won't come and do anything, or if there's too many people for what the permit would be for a two-bedroom, I think maybe the solution is not to, you know, not let us have it, but is to get better enforcement, which we would also like to help with. So in conclusion, I just want to say that I think we can all be good neighbors. I think we can work together. But I also think that our property rights and our reasons for buying places should not necessarily be less important than their reasons for buying places. So once again, if we could get this on the agenda, because I'm always afraid when things are done under this cover of this virus as quote-unquote temporary, they don't stay temporary. Anyway, I really appreciate your time. Once again, we want to be good neighbors. We want to work with our people there. But for you guys on the council to decide who's the winners and losers in a business. And once again, we'll follow any rules you set up for any other short-term rentals in Newport.
Thank you very much.
Thanks much.
All right, thank you. Any other calls? We have two more calls? Okay. Hi, if you're on the phone, so make sure you mute whatever you're listening to, and then go ahead.
Anyway, I really appreciate your time. Once again.
Hi, so if you're on the phone, yep, just make sure you've muted, and then go ahead.
Okay, hi. Hi, too, I'm a resident on Newport Island. And I understood that we, I had some rentals. I probably rent out my house probably about 30% of the time. And I understood, we had a couple bookings in May, I understood that we had to cancel those, which was understandable due to the COVID, you know, crisis. And then after I learned that there was a group from our community that got together to push a longer ban on rentals, and then we couldn't do it through August. This is when we most, you know, need the rentals. This is when we have them the most. And I found that it was pretty unfair. When I was searching for a property, it was very attractive to me to purchase this house because it already had a short-term permit. Since that time, I have, you know, renewed it and followed the laws. We have no desire to have unruly tenants. We have no desire to be a problem, you know, in this process. But like the other gentleman said, I think if we had, if there's an issue, I'd be happy to give my number, or they could call the police on those people, and we could be warned if we have bad tenants. I feel that a ban on short-term rentals, I just don't know how it's even a consideration in that we have a permit, and we follow the rules. And I just want to make sure that we can talk to maybe our neighbors in person, so we can work it out, or to however we need to on the council. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we have another call, and then I'll go to the community room when we're done. Hi, if you're on the phone, just make sure you mute, so we don't hear it.
I feel that. You got it, not a problem. A ban on short-term rentals.
Great, thank you very much. All right, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Michael Ivy. I live at 3801 Marcus, here on Newport Island. I would just like to reemphasize everything that the last three callers have spoken about. We've lived here on the island now for two years. We really enjoy the community. We did purchase it with the idea that it would be a vacation home for me and my family, but also with the idea that we could utilize it for income purposes and rentals. And like most of the people before me have emphasized, it's something that we're relying on and counting on, and that's the reason we're for the short-term rentals here on the island. And I just want to make sure that that privilege isn't removed. We have never rented our home as of yet, but we certainly intend to, and we just don't want to lose that privilege. But we want to be respectful to the owners that are here on the island and the permanent residences. But again, would hate to see that privilege that we feel like we have revoked. So I want to thank everyone for their time, and again, I'm just emphasizing what the three previous callers spoke about.
All right, thank you very much. Any other calls? All right, we'll go back to the community room, because I know I missed someone.
Hello, my name is Nancy Barfield. I live across the street from Ensign. I've lived in Cliff Haven for the past 37 years. We are trying to save our trees at the school, along with the project that Newport Mesa Unified School District is trying to throw on us. They have given us a plan, and in that plan, it takes away 15 trees that have been there for 50 years. These trees have a lifespan of 150 years. Right now, they're in bloom. This is their color that comes out. It's absolutely gorgeous over there. We also have the students that sit under these trees, and they either do their homework, socialize, have crafts, and they love those trees. I have over 1,100 signatures from the school, from the students, who want to save these trees. We have the Newport Mesa Unified School District that doesn't even take a regard to what anybody feels about these trees. All they keep saying, safety, safety, safety. Well, their safety is bringing emissions from cars within 18 feet of their classrooms. And when the cars are going through their new projected banana lot, we will be having emissions running between 20 and 40 minutes, twice a day, five days a week, 20 days a month. So with that, it'll be going in the classrooms, the kids will be breathing it, and nobody wants these, this new parking lot or banana. The city has proposed a new design, and they just ignore it. They won't have community meetings. They have Zoom meeting, and all it is, is a 40-minute presentation by Aura. She then says, start writing questions, and you can't write questions because she's still speaking, and in 20 minutes, it's over with. So I think we've been bamboozled. I don't think they're for the community, the city council, the city staff. Everyone's been trying to work to all make this pull together, and we can't get the board to be on board. I know they had a secret meeting last Friday. Nobody knew it. We all thought they were going to vote again tonight, but they already did it. And even the city didn't know until the five minutes before we had a meeting with the Beaches Park and Recreation. So at that point, I also brought up the trees. I gave them the history of the trees. I shocked everybody. And I think we need to get this project stopped, and we need to get together and come up with a better plan. So I hope you guys somehow put us on the agenda and make this work. It's very, very disappointing. The community is just at an uproar, and the truth hasn't been told. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. All right, so we bring forward our item number 11, which is our budget adoption. So with that, I'll turn it over to a brief staff report, given the multiple meetings we've had so far. That being said, I would like to make sure that either city manager or finance director just speak a little bit to the proposed budget revisions that we'll be straw-polling later tonight as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. As the mayor indicated, there has been quite a lengthy review process. In my 28 years, this has been one of the toughest budgets we've been through. But thank goodness, we're Newport Beach, and we were able to deal with most of the hurdles quite handily. So just a quick overview, the budget is balanced. There was an initial gap of $33 million. We relied on a number of short-term tiered budgetary solutions, and that is acknowledgement that we have much work to do in the new year to continue to work on longer-term solutions. And the current budget maintains the current service levels and a commitment to maintaining critical CIP infrastructure and aggressive payment schedule of our unfunded liability. And as I mentioned, it is a placeholder for, that will be reviewed in the coming quarter. Now, so, Mr. Mayor, as you indicated, there were a number of, you know, the budget process for the, for the, for the public. Finance Committee starts this review in November, and there are quite a number of technical, long meetings to review pensions, OPEB, deep dive into a department, our facilities' financial plan, our harbor and beaches master plan. And we reviewed our revenue assumptions once in March, and then found ourselves needing to review it again in April. Finance Committee reviewed the proposed budget both on May 14th and the 21st, and then on the 22nd, we held a joint meeting. And with a unanimous concurrence with Finance Committee, they recommended council to approve the budget. Now, there were a number of technical items discussed in previous meetings, but I'm going to skip through those. These were some of the tiered solutions that we talked about, but I think the mayor would like to get straight to.
Actually, would you mind going back for just a moment? Because one of the items that we're going to be discussing, this one, stay right here. One of the items we're going to be discussing on the proposed budget revisions is $1 million, and I know you're going to explain what that is, $1 million on the maintenance side of things. If we approve that, does that draw down the contingency reserve to essentially 3.3 instead of 2.3?
It does not, because that, the facilities maintenance fund is, has its own funding source from the general fund. And we've, it normally receives a $1.5 million funding. We made a recommendation to fund only $1 million. And in kind of a haste to review the capital deferrals, I think council may have misunderstood the staff recommendation to reduce the facilities maintenance funding by a half a million, and instead, we reduced it by the full million and a half. So we'd like to add that back, and that does not impact the contingency reserve.
So we wouldn't be transferring $1 million from the general fund over? It would have its own, we would basically be drawing down the fund itself?
There is a plan, $1 million transfer to the facilities maintenance baked into the current budget already.
Got it, so baked into that 2.3. I see.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that. I needed to make sure I had understood that. And you're correct, when you get there, I will say, I think we were mistaken in that straw poll, so go ahead.
Okay, so we, as said before, we started out with an imbalance of about $30, $33 million, just in the new year, and that's after dealing with the $13 million shortfall in the current year that we're currently finishing up. But pleased to announce that with beginning resources and current revenues, we do have a balanced operating budget. And so the proposed checklist, so we're currently taking advantage of a retirement in the auto and warehouse area, and we're currently studying the results, and that may, as a result of that study, we may, we're asking to probably upgrade that, or restructure that area, which might mean moving the auto parts buyer to a full buyer. In terms, so the large item in the CIP is that $1 million for the facilities master plan. We did fund the full million to that plan, and so we're just reinstating the appropriations so Mr. Webb can continue with the facilities maintenance during this year. And then the Superior Avenue West Coast Highway project received some additional grant funding, and so.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to excuse myself briefly because these items are on a conflict list due to prior employment and telecommunication. Thank you.
Okay. This is, I'm sorry, just, this is item, this is the Bellbo Island microtransit? Well, that's okay. I just needed to make sure, because I'm going to have him, okay, okay, awesome. All right, so, well, because of the conflict issue, what I'd like you to do, Dan, is speak to that in the CIP new appropriations, jump down to CIP revenue. I'm going to ask council if they have any questions about this at all. We will straw-poll this afterward, but I just want to make sure we can bring Mr. Muldoon back in for the rest of the discussion. So if you could just touch on this very quickly, I'll ask for any questions, and we can keep going.
So as you see on the CIP revenue revisions, we're including that new grant of $780,000. And I don't.
So 11 and 12?
Yep.
Okay. Before we keep moving on, just so we can bring Mr. Muldoon back in, do we have any questions at all about the Bellbo Island microtransit feasibility study? That is items number five, 11 and 12 on this.
So, and again, just to be clear on that, on the Bellbo Island microtransit feasibility, that again is recognizing revenue, the grant revenue or the contributions? The two grants, that's what it is. So it's not changing the appropriation of the budget, but it's changing the funding source to recognize grant revenue.
And it's essentially an offset?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any questions?
Just to clarify, so is it 1.3? I know you've just explained, just explain it again. Is this new revenue that we've identified?
Yeah, so in some cases, it's new revenue and, well, as a result of receiving some additional grants, one, I think we have some new grant revenue, as well as Dave, our Public Works Director, recommended shifting some of the money out of the contribution, or out of measure and into the contributions fund, recognizing that we have some additional grant revenue. So it's just changing the funding source for it.
So these are new projects that we had not considered, and now they're in because they're included in the CIP because they now have new outside external grant revenue sources, source of funding?
That's the extent of my knowledge. Dave, do you want to speak to those?
So, hang on just a second. So I do want to speak only to the questions about Bellbo Island feasibility, so we can bring Mr. Muldoon back in. So is there, do you have to speak to feasibility to explain what you're about to explain? The, I'm sorry, the microtransit one?
I don't, they're just, they were in the CIP, you saw this project, we're just basically identifying the two grants that are funding that, the island and OCTA.
Okay, so that, okay, that's fine. I'm just trying to understand, and so we're considering them now because you've just become aware of them, or just got notification that the grants have been?
No, they were in the budget. They're just being identified here as specific grant revenue.
Okay, or they hadn't been before? Okay, or they hadn't been before?
They had been before, and we've always known that the Bellbo Islands, the 6,580, 58 is from OCTA.
Okay, we're just kind of organizing this differently.
Right, there's a bit of cleanup, you know, on, yeah, there's one that's state parks grant funds, so we're just getting it appropriated into the right project now, cleaning up with the new budget.
Yeah, not exactly our normal checklist, where we get to pick fun things. All right. Any other discussion on the micro-transit feasibility study? Okay, all right, we'll bring Mr. Muldoon back in then. All right, before we move on, any other questions about any of the items other than the feasibility study on this or the next sheet? Okay, all right, go ahead, Dan.
So, that's the extent of the checklist this year. It's, as you said, it's not very, very long. And so, recommended action, we just conducted a public hearing, we'll want to take public comment, take a straw vote on the, so we've, you have the proposed budget and those few revisions that we listed on those previous three slides. And ask the council to take a vote on the proposed budget and the revisions in two parts. And adopt Resolution 2056, adopting the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 as amended.
All right, thank you. Before we get to questions from council and any discussion on substance, let me just say a couple of thank yous. First, to staff, this has been incredibly challenging budget season. You basically had to take a budget that had its framework created and completely revise it once March hit. So, thank you for all of the work, especially behind the scenes that has gone on. I know this has been, yeah, this has been, this has been an undertaking. So, I just want to say thank you upfront on that front. And then, to our finance committee members, I'd like to also say thank you. This is also, it's been one of those incredibly challenging times, but it's been great, because iron has sharpened iron throughout the discussions and the questions, and it's made the public discussion much better. So, to my fellow council members on there, Ms. Dixon and Ms. Brenner, thank you very much for the service you've given over the last year on the finance committee to our citizen members. I'd like to say thank you to Larry Tucker, Bill Collopy, John Reed, and Joe Stapleton. Thank you very much for all of the work that you've put in, the volunteer hours that you've committed to what has turned into one of the most challenging fiscal years in our city's history. So, to them, I'd like to say thank you. So, with that, I'll kick it over to Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your hard work as well. So, Dan M., if I may call you that.
Absolutely.
Welcome to 2020. It's been a blast, right?
Always.
On slide two, you mentioned continuing to preserve the aggressive unfunded pension liability plan that we've put in place for some time now. Would you mind going into a little bit of details?
Sure, so currently, we have appropriated five, well, $35 million to pay down our unfunded liability. And that will take care of all of the pension liability that we have to date and pay that down within a remaining 13 to 14 years.
Is that the minimum fresh start requirement, 35?
35 is our plan to keep the payment level. And we have an additional $5 million in reserve that, it's out there for reserve. So, the first six months of the year, we plan to continue to make our full additional discretionary payment for the first six months. And then, we'll revisit the budget and ask for council's permission to continue with an additional 5 million, was our plan. Because in the fall, when we reviewed the actual evaluation and the capital market assumptions, it became readily apparent that it may be difficult for CalPERS to earn the full 7% in the next five to 10 years. So, trying to get ahead of it, that extra 5 million was an anticipatory pre-funding of losses that we were anticipating over the next five to 10 years.
So, just to compare 2020 to a typical, much better year, we're making our minimum payments per the fresh start. Then, we've adopted an informal tradition of paying above that.
Correct.
And so, this year is different how?
It's different in that, so the full additional discretionary payment is broken into two components totaling 10.246 million. 5.246 million is already baked into the budget. The remaining five is on reserve pending our financial situation as we assess it in the fall or mid-year.
So, we're putting 5 million aside to see how things go.
Correct.
We're still going to do above and beyond the minimum fresh start payments that we did a couple of years ago.
Correct.
So, Newport Beach is continuing, even despite of all this, continuing to pay down our pension debt faster than the minimum requirements were currently set.
Correct.
So, you know, to me, that's really one thing that matters more than almost anything else in this budget, because a lot of cities aren't even going to be able to make their minimum payments, unfortunately, with everything's happened. So, we're making our minimum payments, which we reset to be more aggressive a couple of years ago. And we're going above and beyond that. And we might be able to go above and beyond that even more, depending upon what we learn in a quarter or two. And the effect of that is that we are essentially shortening the life and reducing the amount payable at the end of term of our unfunded pension liability in total.
That is correct.
Yeah, there could have been three slides on that, just because it's such an important thing for the residents. And I like brevity, Dan, don't get me wrong. I don't want you to take that the wrong way, but I'm saying that it's such a big deal. And it's not, it's mentioned here, almost like a footnote, but really, it could be a title in of itself.
Sure, that November council meeting, I did probably take the full hour and a half to go through all those options, so.
That's right.
You missed out this year.
So, amazing job, staff and finance committee. It's nice to know that the policies are being held true. And I don't agree with everything in this budget, there are a couple of items, I think, you know, we could have put off a year, but that's almost like saying, how many angels can dance on the head of a needle, the pin of a needle? Yeah, yeah, thank you, on that, whatever the term is. So, without getting to semantics, thank you for the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I too was going to comment on the pay down of the unfunded pension. We are indeed fortunate in our community, thanks to our steadily rising property tax assess valuations, that is holding steady for this period of time. But we're also, we always plan for the inevitable, that a rainy day, that we'll be prepared. But as long as we've been on the council since 2014, 15, we've been on this pay down. And I remember, though, it was going to be, it was 15 years about four years ago. Why isn't it down to 10 years? But we're getting there. I know that there, I know what the answer is, it depends on the valuations, but, and we've adjusted it over the years. But I'm very proud that we've continued to add and over and above the minimum, just as Mr. Muldoon said. What I was going to say, if you could please advance back or go back to the tier slide, the multicolored tier slide, if you would please. I just want to, for the purposes of edification for our residents who are listening and watching, just to be clear, while we are budgeting for a deficit, a reduced spending, not a deficit, a reduced spending of 33 million that we have reduced in our spent, total spending. But just to be clear, each quarter, staff is going to be evaluating, the first quarter, it's $3 million. And is that, am I reading that correctly? Why don't I, I don't want to put words in your mouth. We are not, we are planning a budget as if we are reduce our spend of 33 million, but we're not implementing all of it until if, unless the economic situation continued to deteriorate, which may not. So, why don't you explain how the tiers work?
So, the tiers are how we bridged the gap. And in total, so tier one was $2.9 million of operating cuts that didn't impact services. We've got another 2 million of hiring freeze or...
And we've already implemented these?
We've already implemented these, so we're all ready to bridge that 33.2 million dollar gap. We're into part, a very small part of tier five.
Oh, we're already at tier five?
2.3 million into, we're using our contingency, a very small portion of our contingency reserve to get us to the 33.2 million.
Right, so if the economy were to dramatically do the V increase and sales tax revenues and TOT, our primary, in addition to property taxes, revenues, return, we would do what?
The first thing we would do would be to rebuild any of our reserves. And then, anything impacting, we would come back and take a judicious balance between anything that would enhance services. We may choose not to finance the fire station, we may choose to move forward with some other capital projects.
So, the message to the community is, we have a balanced budget, thank you, and the hard work of staff, for sure. And we will continue, that we'll be discussing this many times going forward, as we see the state of the economy improving, we hope. And we'll be continually making adjustments. So, I just want everybody to remember this chart and how we could possibly restore any of these reductions, or what we decide to do as we go forward.
And probably, if I may, one of the things we have tried to avoid is any service level cuts. So, tier six, you notice, we're prepared and ready to do, but right now, we have not, we're not proposing any service level cuts, except to the extent where we're forced to or mandated due to social distancing or non-congratulation.
Well, I just want to commend staff for outline, putting this together in this type of framework, because then it makes it very simple and easy for digesting the difficult reductions that you're making. But we under, we can understand it, and I think the public can appreciate its clarity. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I had two quick things. First one was covered by Mr. Muldoon, so I appreciate that. Second was, I mean, if nothing else, we've been receiving emails about the budget for the first time in quite some time. So, it's been interesting. And I, so, we, a lot of cities right now are talking about whether to fund or defund certain departments and discussions. So, I was kind of curious, just looking at the numbers, what in particular our police department had been seeing in terms of calls for service? And it's interesting. So, I asked to see what the inbound calls to Newport Beach Police Department's communications have been for the, for last year and then year-to-date. It was much higher than I thought, honestly. So, last year, in 2019, the police department received 55,032 emergency calls in a year. That is the equivalent of 346 calls to calling in for an emergency per day to Newport Beach Police Department. For 911 specifically, they had a 99.69% answer rate within 15 seconds. 99.69%. If you call 911 in our city, they will pick up, is what you're, is what that's saying. And there are 346 people, day in and day out, who called the police department for an emergency, and they expect to be answered, and they expect to have someone respond. And people are responding. And that's emergency, by the way. On the non-emergency side, they received 126,381 non-emergency calls last year. That is the equivalent of 346 calls a day to our police department. 346 a day. That means that if you combine our emergency and non-emergency calls to our police department, people specifically deciding at that moment, I am going to call the police department to ask for help of some kind, our police department received 497 calls a day last year of people expecting an answer and expecting someone to respond. This year, despite people being home for about two months under quarantine, they've still seen 17,460 calls to 911 year-to-date. They have still received 4,154 calls that came in through a different source, you know, essentially, someone called the police department for an emergency, they just didn't call 911. And they've received, and this is a staggering number, through year-to-date, 54,683 calls year-to-date on non-emergency matters. To date, in 2020, the police department has received 76,297 calls asking for service of some kind, help of some kind. And I point that out, because when you make a call to the police department, you expect someone to pick up. When you call them, you expect them to help. And I, and so, every time we've received one of these emails, I have responded to a few of them, asking them to just let me know when they're going through the budget. Of all of the full-time employees we have in our police department, let us know which ones you'd like to cut, specifically. And the thing is, I think that that's a fair question, because the truth of the matter is, if you are asking us to cut any part of our budget, because it is a balance, we don't print money, we don't take on a bunch of debt to take on our operational services. It is a balance, and you've got to make sure that you're paying attention to that balance. You, if you are going to remove something from, if you're going to add in one area, you're going to remove from another. That is how this works. And it is a process that is very difficult, it's a process that takes months to deal with. It's a process that every single person in the audience right now, and we have way more staff than normal here, because it's budget season, thank you for being here, by the way. But every department goes through this, they have to justify every dollar that they're spending, they have to justify every employee position that they've got. Our finance department runs every calculation, our city manager runs through every piece of advice, makes a reasoned discussion, and presents us with a budget. And it's not a small effort. Our total budget this year exceeds $300 million. $300 million, that is a lot of money. And there, and it's a complicated city. We've been around for over 100 years, we're a full-service city with a police, fire, lifeguards. And we've got infrastructure that has been under Bellbo Island for 80 years, Lido Island for the same, Newport Heights for 60 years. This is a, this is complicated, and it's supposed to be complicated. And I welcome anyone wanting to come in and talk to us about this. But I just ask you, pay, like, read through it, understand that when you add to something, you're subtracting it. And ask us, and tell me specifically, if you want us to subtract something, what? Everything is line item. Every department, every employee, every dollar that we spend is line item somewhere in our budget. If you want to cut it, let us know what, so we can balance the trade-offs. But that's how the discussion goes when we're talking about budgets. And so, I welcome people coming into the process and discussing it with us. But I just welcome you to, I'm just asking you, spend the time, because we do. Mr. Avery?
Thank you. I guess the biggest assumptions for budget of this coming fiscal year would be sales taxes and TOT?
Those are the, there's the most uncertainty with those two revenue sources, yes.
And so, how did, how did the committee or how did you derive it? Trying to get numbers after this extraordinary year that we're having, and then sort of trying to project what's going to happen?
So, the very first thing we do is, we try to find comparable analogues, looking at other events that may act similarly. We started out with, maybe it's the 9/11 event, 60-day in and out, and we started to move on. The number of folks going into unemployment, those numbers were staggering. The amount of revenue decline, as sharp as it was, was staggering. And we quickly ended up realizing this is an event like we haven't seen before. So, we took a look at at least the Great Recession as a good starting point, and saying overall, that was about an 8% one-year reduction to our revenues. We doubled it as a starting point. And then, realized that there's, there's not one number, but a range of potential results. And then, we tried to build a budget that where we could, we could react to those... And then we tried to build a budget that where we could, we could react to those various, those various outcomes. So there is, you know, we may not hit every revenue source right on, but in total, we believe we have the flexibility to cover almost every event that we can think of.
A lot of work went into that. Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon?
Well, thank you. Just want to follow up what you articulated well. Something that people might not realize is kind of counterintuitive is that during the time when we were handling the unprecedented number of protests here in the city of Newport Beach, we're using a lot of resources, and those resources come from the city budget. And they include things like traffic control, creating perimeters, many, many hours of overtime. So just to go to the, to the, to the point of cutting budgets, it's nonsensical, because it is those same budgets that we can use to rely on for peaceful protests to happen within our city limits. And we have the finest trained officers as well, which you could see from the job they did, which also is expensive. So, in neighboring cities that are also dealing with a similar campaign, wherever there's been a successful way of dealing with these protests, you will see an increase in budget be dedicated towards law enforcement services. So I just wanted to point that out, because the mayor was making an excellent point. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner?
On that same point, I just wanted to say that during the recent protests, the irony was not lost on me that we're seeing these terrible horrific events in other cities of the way police, not all of them, certainly occasionally behave. And the irony is that our biggest complaint in Newport Beach is that our police are too nice. And, I mean, we complain to John sometimes, saying they need to not give so many warnings, they need to give more tickets and that sort of thing, but wow, Newport Beach is a great place to be, and your community policing efforts are recognized and appreciated. And I don't think that there is a time that we could be more appreciative of living in Newport Beach than we are with this budget and with our police department, and even our fire in Corona del Mar this week, the immediate response of our fire department. We just really have so much to be proud of in this city, and it's really, and thank you for your efforts in budgeting, in developing this budget and making sure that we can pay for the things that are essential. Thank you.
Thank you. Just going to add one other thing, following up on Mr. Avery's point. You're right, Mr. Avery, those are the two biggest, the biggest assumptions that could swing either way on us, our TOT and our sales tax. And so that's the, and I'm pointing this out only for residents' purposes, the folks who haven't been able to watch any of the previous meetings where we've been discussing that. That's the point of what you're seeing on the screen right now with the tiered approach. If we find ourselves in a situation where the revenue is better than assumed, we would be able to pull back and start funding areas that were in the prior tiers that we're cutting now. If we find that we have actually missed the mark and it's worse than we had anticipated, then we can draw down further into the contingency reserve. We, I would suggest, just for a moment, we would not draw fully down on that contingency reserve. Remember that contingency reserve, even after this, will be 50 million? A little, yeah, right around $50 million. And then I would also point out for just a moment that there is what I would call contingency reserve Tier 5.5, which is the, which you can put, we would make, we'd have to make a decision as a body, but if we needed to draw down further into the contingency reserve at Tier 5, we would have to make a decision at this, at this, as a body, how far down? And then if we hit a number where we felt we shouldn't go farther, what we can also do is pull back on that $5 million that we would be sending as an anticipatory paydown to calpers, which is currently being held. So that would be, that would be what I would kind of call 5.5 as tier, or we would make the call on service level cuts. There's a lot of things that we can do, but I just want to point that out for, for everybody up here, that we do have some more, more things we can do. I would also just real quickly point out that we're pretty darn conservative on our revenue assumptions on the sales and TOT. We have a consultant who has done a pretty good job for us in years past on assuming revenue. We've always assumed low on our revenue, and we've assumed high on our expenditures. This is one of the reasons we've done so well, long-term on fiscal issues, and why we typically have a surplus. And actually, we're using last year's surplus to help stopgap this, which is a good mark of why we did it in the first place. But I only point that out because we are assuming a fairly low revenue assumption, lower actually than our consultant had suggested. So I do hope we're wrong. I do hope we're wrong. All right, Ms. Dixon?
Wanted to follow up on that. I think I said this in the, maybe it was another meeting, Finance Committee meeting, but our headcount of permanent employees, FTEs, has been consistent, but for maybe one or two plus or minus, for as long as I've been on the council, it's been flat. And it's remarkable, it's what, 728 or something like that of full-time employees?
Yes.
I remember that number, because it doesn't change. And that's a sign of fiscal responsibility, conservative financial management, and I applaud staff for doing a lot with the same amount of resources. And costs have gone up, but yet this budget of 199, in terms of the general fund, is the same budget when I ran for city council. That was the general fund budget in 2014. So we're back to where we were six years ago, and hopefully we can add to it. But this city is well-managed financially, and we should be, I am very pleased, and I know we are proud of that, and I might as well include a nice compliment to our police department, because I don't think we have protesters against our police that would suggest that we have anything but the finest, and we're very proud. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, can I make a few quick thank yous?
Absolutely.
So, I want to recognize that a, it takes a village to build a budget, and that's very true, you know, going from all the department directors to my staff, to the city manager, to all the council members and the finance committee. It's a long haul on a normal year, and this was an extraordinary year, so it felt like we built about five different budgets going through this, and I want to thank everybody. It was, it was truly a village effort, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to go out to public comment now on this item. Do we have any public, it's okay, Dan, you can take a seat. Thanks. Do we have any public comment in the room?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this again is Jim Mosher. The last-minute list that you're being asked to approve of revisions to the proposed budget does indeed look like it's very slight, but I wanted to point out that until very recently, members of the public who looked online at the proposed capital improvement plan saw a $113 million budget. That very recently, I believe today or in the last couple of days, has been replaced with a new document that shows an $87 million capital improvement plan. Just procedurally, since our charter requires that document to be available for public review for 10 days before adoption, I am wondering how long that revised budget has been available in our city clerk's office. The revised budget does show the lecture hall being postponed for a year. It shows the junior lifeguards being postponed for a year. It does show the Lido Fire Station going ahead this year with $9.5 million. I'm still unclear how anybody looking at the budget knows if that's $9.5 million, we know already where it's coming from, or $9.5 million that we expect to borrow. And as to the other parts of the budget, buried somewhere in the clerk's budget, I believe there's an allocation for this November's election, which was to be held to elect three city council members. A few meetings back, you added to that a proposed charter amendment to add the Harbor Commission to the city charter. The budget for that, I believe, is over $100,000. And I would like to point out, it's unclear at this point what will happen, but currently nobody has filed to run against any of the incumbents. Should that remain true, the city does not actually have to hold an election this November. The matter about the Harbor Commission is very non-urgent, could easily be put off for two years. If that comes to pass, and you're in a position to delay that, it would save the city a quick $100,000, which is more than a dollar per resident, and something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item in the community room? All right, seeing none, we have a call. Hi, if you're on the phone, go ahead.
Yes, this is David Tanner calling. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I wanted to report an observation, and that observation is with our local parks, in particular the Sunset Ridge Park at Superior and Coast Highway. I believe there's budget items number four and number 10 that talk about improvement. And my observations are that there, since the virus has changed the way people work, that there's been a significant increase in use at this particular park, perhaps other parks, but I can report firsthand at this particular park. And I no longer consider this park underutilized, and I know there's a significant amount of money planned. I'm not sure what items four and number 10, what the detailed breakdown of those items are, but you may want to reassess the need for these improvements at this time. I did notice that there was a soccer, what looked like a team playing, and there were plenty of people on the weekends and during the week now using this park, and so we might look at that as a way to possibly reassess spending this money at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. All right. Next caller? Hi, if you're on the phone, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Charles Klob. Jim Mosher eloquently addressed you a few minutes ago, but he neglected to ask you directly, so I'm going to ask you directly. In his written comments that were sent into the council regarding this budget, have the staff, has the staff addressed those comments and either fixed them or not? I realize that some of the things he asked or mentioned have been corrected, but have they all been addressed? Thank you for your service.
Any other calls? Okay, we'll bring it back. Dan, why don't you come on back up? I know I, you responded to Mr. Mosher in writing, but for the sake of responding to Mr. Klob, would you mind just answering the question of have you responded to everything?
Sure. So one of the questions that comes up quite frequently is when you look at the budget in its totality, quite often revenues exceed expenditures. And that is not the case on, in the operating budget, but it's quite frequently, almost every year is the case with the capital and special revenue budgets. It's rare that revenues and expenditures for capital projects come in and are expended in the same year. So, quite frequently, so I think the implication was, is that we were spending deficit spending, and it's quite the opposite, we're spending in arrears because we're starting out with money that has, or revenue sources that had not been spent in prior years, that start out as a beginning balance, plus the current year revenues. And while those two together create a source to balance the budget, it's only the new year revenues that I think Mr. Mosher was pointing to, rather than the full source, which would be the beginning balance, plus the new year revenue sources to cover the capital. And that's, that's the main, that was the crux of his comments.
All right.
If I didn't miss anything?
All right, appreciate that. Before I go to straw polling, is there any further questions of Mr., hang on one second, of our finance director before he sits down? Okay. All right. Now I'm going to conduct, pardon me, the straw poll, so would you mind, can you, who can control the, all right, thank you. Would you, could you please go back to the slides? And just for sake of clarity, Mr. Harp, if nothing is polled, do we, for conflict purposes, do I need to vote separately? Or can we vote on the whole thing?
You can vote on the whole thing as one action, and people won't need to recuse themselves unless an item's polled.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, when we get the, when we get the, you know what, I'll tell you what, it's page 11-16 in our, in our council packet. This is, I'm sorry, did I, I meant 11-16. So 11-16 is the proposed budget revisions fiscal year 2020-21. Is there anything that people would like to pull off of this list to separately vote on? All right, seeing none, I'm going to take a straw poll then of including all of the proposed budget revisions. If you support including all of the proposed budget revisions, please indicate by raising your hand.
This makes me nervous. Can I just recuse myself on this?
That's fine.
Yeah, just to be safe, because my items are on this, I'm going to recuse myself.
That's fine, I'll tell you what, yeah, no problem. We'll pull off 5, 5, 11, and 12. We'll vote separately on that in just a moment. For everything other than 5, 5, 11, and 12, if you support including those as proposed budget revisions, please indicate with the raising of a hand.
That was 6, 1.
Hang on, hang on one second.
One moment.
Yeah, just a moment.
That's unanimous, 7, 0.
All right, and at this time, we'll...
It would just note for the record, the council member, Muldoon, recused himself based on business interests.
Okay. All right, so we're now looking at 5, 5, 11, and 12. If you would like to see these included in the proposed budget revisions, please indicate by raising your hand.
That's 6, 0.
Okay. All right, we'll bring Mr. Muldoon back in, and then folks would allow me the privilege of making the motion. I appreciate that. All right. It's an awfully difficult year, but it's a budget I think we ought to be proud of, given the circumstances. So with that, I will make the motion to approve staff recommendation with the amendments of the straw poll. And seconded by Ms. Dixon, any council discussion? All right, seeing none, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7, 0.
All right, we'll be revisiting that one. All right, so with that, we'll go into item number 12, the approval of the fee study update. This was continued from previous, from the May 12, 2020 city council meeting and previously discussed. Does anyone need a staff report on this? I think it's been pretty well documented. I don't think so either. Any specific questions before we go to public comment? Okay. All right, we're going to go to public comment on this item. Do we have any public comment from the community room on item number 12?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, Jim Mosher again. I looked at this more carefully when it was before the council in March. I didn't see any changes being made to it, so I wanted to point out, it seems to still have a few little bugs that seem to be, need to be changed. For instance, you're adopting both a fee schedule and an ordinance. The ordinance that you're adopting sets some fees as flat fees, for instance, those to appeal decisions from the planning commission of the city council, for instance. I believe the fee schedule says those will be adjusted by cost of living, and I don't see how the two can be compatible. If it's a flat fee, it's not going to be adjusted over the years. And there were other problems I noted back in March, I'm not sure any have been corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments in the community room? All right, seeing none, do we have any calls? No, we'll bring it back. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion? Motion to approve staff recommendation by Ms. Dixon. Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Brenner. Let's take a vote. Seconded by Ms. Brenner, let's take a vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2020-10, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, amending Exhibit A to Newport Beach Municipal Code, Section 3.36.030, related to cost recovery, with council member Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 6, 1.
All right, thank you. We'll move to item number 13. I am going to ask for a brief staff report on this one, given the complexities. And I will also note at the outset that there were some pretty technical questions coming in from some of our very educated residents on this issue. So just anticipate that, in particular, for example, I know Mr. Tanner sent in some pretty technical questions, and I think that it's worth talking about some of those. And then I, I know Ms. Stevens had sent in some questions. I know I'd seen a response to that, so I think it's worth just discussing a little bit of some of the concerns that some of our residents have raised. So I just want to point that out at the, at the outset. So, all right, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so Mayor, City Council, my name's Tony Bryan, I'm the city traffic engineer. So I'll try to step through this fairly quickly. This is about Senate Bill 743, which is vehicle miles traveled. And this is a new metric required by the state to look at transportation impacts in SEQA documents such as EIRs. I also have Tony Petros here with me this evening. Tony worked on the implementation guide, which is going to be a supplement to the council policy. We're coming tonight with a recommendation to make an amendment to council policy K3 to add the methodology for this. So there is a history with Senate Bill 743, goes all the way back to September 2013 when the state passed the law. Essentially, the law shifts the goals for transportation analysis from motorist delay to reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and that's the, the crux of the, the law. They decided, the Office of Planning and Research, decided to then make vehicle miles traveled the new metric for reviewing transportation impacts in SEQA documents. And then ultimately, in December 2018, the Office of Planning and Research provided a technical advisory which lays out guidance for doing that analysis. Real briefly, what's the difference between vehicle miles traveled and level of service? Essentially, vehicle miles traveled is exactly that, how many trips from a project per day multiplied by the estimated number of miles that those trips would travel to their ultimate destination. The level of service, the motorist delay, which is what we use currently and has been used for reviewing transportation impacts, that's basically the traffic volume on the roadway divided by the capacity. So typically, in the past, if there have been impacts associated with increases in traffic volume, you add capacity or lanes to address that, that motorist delay. The Office of Planning and Research put out this technical advisory, which a lot of cities are using. Essentially, it provides recommendations for how this analysis is done, what types of thresholds there are for looking at whether there are impacts with transportation or land use projects, and mitigation measures that could be looked at if there are significant impacts. Now, it's, the technical advisory did discuss that agencies can use this advisory as their goal, or as their recommendations, or you can develop your own thresholds, but if you do develop your own thresholds, you have to support that with substantial evidence. So the city VMT and traffic analysis, what we would be doing is switching for SEQA documents over into a VMT screening and a VMT analysis. But it's important to note here that doing the analysis by VMT does not end our level of service analysis as well. So we traditionally do the traffic studies per the traffic phasing ordinance. We'll continue to do that because that is based on impacts and addressing impacts for our general plan. So we're not going to stop doing level of service, we'll be doing both. So there's three steps basically in a VMT analysis. Number one, there's screening criteria, which basically you look at six different criteria. If it meets any of those, then you don't have to do a detailed VMT analysis. If you do meet a criteria and you get into that analysis, there's thresholds where you look at whether impacts are met, if those thresholds are exceeded. And then ultimately mitigation, if you find that a project does have significant impacts. The, very quickly, the types of trips are essentially home-based trips. So picture your, when you leave your home and you're traveling to work, or you're traveling to the store to go shopping, all of those are home-based trips. For a residential project, an office project, a retail project, those are determined to be the three primary types of projects that you're looking at. So for the thresholds, for a residential project, it's how many miles are traveled per day, per person, from that home. For an office, how many miles are traveled per day for the employee of that office? And then for retail, it's whatever the total miles traveled per day is attributed to that project. And then for mixed-use projects, you look at each of those separate entities. Here's your six screening criteria. There are transit areas, high-quality transit areas, and I'll show you some maps in just a moment, so you can see what they are. These are areas within a half a mile of a major transit stop or along a transit quarter with a 15-minute headway. VMT maps, and again, I'll show you that in just a moment, these are low VMT areas calculated by our traffic model. The third one is, is the project a retail project? Is it a local-serving retail project, generally a smaller type of project? The high percentage of affordable housing, this is to be determined. Basically, the state looks at a high percentage of affordable housing with no impact as 100%. And so we know, looking at that, that that's not, that that does not fit our city community development, and we will be looking at what is that percentage of affordable housing that, that meets the community needs? Projects that increase 300 or less daily trips, that I have an asterisk, because that's the one variation that we have from the OPR guidance. So what the state put out as guidance, that's our one change. And that is consistent, 300 or less trips with our traffic phasing ordinance. And then the last one is any type of institutional or government type of project is screened This is your high-quality transit area. Basically, the shaded green area fits within that type of location where there is either a major, major transit stop or a bus route with a 15-minute or less headway. So the Route 55, which comes down and cuts across Coast Highway into Newport Center, that has a 15-minute headway, and that's why you'll see the green area basically shaded around that entire route, which includes Newport Center. And then there's Route 47, which comes down onto the peninsula. This is the existing VMT per capita map, excuse me. Anything in the green areas has been calculated per our traffic model to be a low VMT area. So currently, anything within those areas for residential trips per day is considered to be low, it's less than 85% of the county average. So you can use that as a screening tool, and you can say if that project falls within that green area, you can screen that out from a detailed analysis. And then the next one is a VMT per employee, and the interesting thing to look at this map is the entire map is above county average. So essentially, the vehicle miles traveled for employees is above the county average throughout the city.
Can we go back two slides? Kind of curious about something. What is it about Newport Coast that makes Newport Coast higher on a, on a VMT per capita map?
You know, I don't know exactly, other than basically, we input the land use from the entire city into the traffic model, and then it essentially does those calculations, comparing it back to the, the county average, so.
I think it's the Ferraris.
So I don't really have a direct.
It doesn't count, it doesn't count number of cars per person. Anyway.
All right, I don't have a direct answer, other than this is what our traffic model provides.
That's okay. All right, now, I was.
Provides.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Jump ahead.
Yeah, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. Bryan, go back, if you would, please go back to that prior green map. So could you just translate that? You're saying that any project that is built and, or proposed to be built in those areas would not go, it'd be exempt from the SEQA analysis?
From a detailed SEQA analysis, correct.
But we could, as a city, would still do a traffic analysis?
We would still continue to do our, our TPO, our traffic phasing ordinance analysis.
Does that have any weight, any longer in terms of our decision-making?
It, it does, because it, it comes back to our general plan. So we still have standards and, and in our general plan that we need to meet as far as level of service. So we will continue to do that, because we, we need to look at our general plan and the standards that we have. This is vehicle miles traveled, which is essentially for a SEQA document, like an EIR. So you're looking at thresholds for that with the VMT, but we will continue to do both.
Okay, thank you.
These are your thresholds then for significance and for impact, and the county average vehicle miles traveled was provided to us by OCTA. They have the numbers of 17.9 vehicle miles traveled per capita for residential. So that's essentially saying for, per resident, per, per person is driving on average 17 miles per day. Now, the per employee office is going to be higher, because then it's looking at, you're leaving your home, you're going to your office. Let's say at lunchtime, you're then traveling out to get lunch, or you're going to the post office, or you're doing something else, you've got some additional miles traveled associated with that, so there's a higher amount for the employee. And basically, the OPR technical advisory set out thresholds of significance for cities throughout the state with the goal, because we're looking at greenhouse gas emissions, their goal was to reduce the vehicle miles traveled by 15% over the, the current county average. And so that's what we decided to do and adopt that as our threshold goal, and many cities throughout the state are doing the same thing. So that means our calculated thresholds then become the 15.2 and the 20.5 numbers. And then for retail, though, the threshold is no net increase in vehicle miles traveled. Step-by-step process, basically, the application comes in like it normally does. The first thing we would do is review the screening criteria. Does it meet any one of those six criteria? If it does, that's the end of the analysis, you don't need to get into the details. If it does not meet any of those criterias, then that's when you start to get into a detailed analysis. So if we fall into that group of between 300 and 1,000 trips per day, and there's only one land use, then you can calculate your VMT manually. Or if you get into a larger project or mixed-use projects, we see a lot of mixed-use projects come in, then we would use our traffic model to calculate the VMT. And then we would look at that VMT per capita, or the VMT per employee, or total, compare it back to those thresholds, those numbers there for, to see if there is an impact. If it's increased those thresholds, then you have a significant impact, and there would be mitigation. And the implementation manual that was prepared by LSA shows this in a, in a visual of what the step-by-step process is. For general plan update, we would be doing this similarly, we would be doing a vehicle miles traveled calculation through this process. We'd be doing, using the model to calculate what the, the entire city's VMT is for comparing the existing general plan land uses to whatever general plan update land uses that we're looking at doing. Essentially, you're comparing back the future land, the, the updated land uses to what the existing is, and you're looking to achieve a lower VMT with the, with the update. Mitigation measures, there's a very large amount of mitigation measures that can be used. The implementation guide lays out pages and pages of types of implementation that can be used, but it mostly revolves around transit, bicycle and pedestrian improvements, ride-sharing, teleworking options, et cetera. So mostly transit bikes, et cetera. The goal being overall, get people out of their cars, get them to use transit, get them to use other forms of, of transportation. Many of these mitigation improvements, they lay out wide ranges of how the VMT can be reduced, so it can be difficult to quantify, but we would work through those different types of mitigation to determine what the impacts or reductions would be. And then there could be, at some point in the future, some type of regional fee versus doing actual mitigation improvements. Let's say a project would chip into a, a regional fee to mitigate their impact. So the amendment to council policy K3, we felt this was the right place to, to place this mitigation and this methodology. The K3 is the SEQA policy, so what we're doing is we're including the framework for this analysis into the end of K3, and that is a step-by-step methodology for completing this SEQA analysis. And if you have any questions, I'm here, and also Mr. Petros from LSA is also here to answer any questions.
All right, I have a few. So I assume for just, I assume that you, Tony, you were able to take a look at Mr. Tanner's email from earlier today with some of the technical questions?
Yes.
So I'm going to try and run through a couple to make sure that we're talking through the policy. So one of the changes he recommended was deleting the phrase "traffic" from the phrase "transportation/traffic impacts." Did you have a thought on that?
Well, with VMT, there's two different types of analysis that you do, and I didn't get into one of those, which is basically for transportation projects. So for a CIP roadway improvement project or other type of project, there's a whole set of, of analysis associated with that. The focus here tonight was looking at land development, land use. But it's a transportation project, there are land use projects, so there's traffic, you know, analysis associated with both, though I, I think it's more appropriate to keep traffic in, in there.
And then he had a, a comment about project screening. He'd like to see the phrase "based on substantial evidence," so put in after the phrase, "a land use project and/or transportation project that, based on substantial evidence, meet one or more of the criteria, et cetera." What are your thoughts on that?
Right. Well, the substantial evidence phrase is basically something that comes out of the OPR technical advisory. So what it's saying is utilize the technical advisory, or if you want to change anything in the technical advisory, which we have that one where we changed it to 300 trips per day, then you would provide substantial evidence to support that change. So that's essentially where that term comes from. You don't need to provide that substantial evidence in an analysis, you're doing it as part of the study.
Okay. Then he had a question for this. Please justify why projects in these areas warrant exemption from VMT mitigation. He's referencing one and two. Why do the screening criteria not apply citywide? As written, the resolution does not require substantial evidence. It sounds like what you're thinking, what you're saying, though, that the resolution does contemplate substantial evidence?
Yes, yes.
All right, so he had a question, why do the screening criteria not apply citywide?
The screen, it does apply citywide. I don't know if he's referring to the one map that shows the different locations, the VMT map, but all of the screening, all of the entire VMT analysis applies citywide.
Okay. And then, will this decision place any member of the city council in a potential conflict of interest? I guess that's maybe a question for Mr. Harp.
Yes, the public generally exception would apply here, because it's dealing with the entire city.
Okay. I thought so too, but I needed to ask. How will the screening criteria apply to the general plan update, project SEQA documentation, if you know?
I briefly touched on it with the one slide. We will do VMT analysis with the general plan update, and we'll compare We will do VMT analysis with the general plan update, and we'll compare the VMT overall for the entire city calculated versus the existing general plan.
Okay. He's referencing Roman numeral six, which is, he's asking to find high level of affordable housing. His comment is, this should be based on substantial evidence per OPR. Technical advisory or the city council should establish the level of affordability, what happens with a mixed-use project with a high level of affordability. So what are your thoughts on that one?
Right, that's the one that is the to be determined. We're going to be working with community development to determine what the appropriate affordable housing percentage is that might be an impact, but we haven't hit that yet.
Okay. A few others. On the TPO, he said, "Policy K3 applies only to SEQA," is the TPO part of SEQA?
It's not part of the SEQA analysis, it wouldn't be included in an EIR as far as impacts, but we put it there just to reinforce that we will continue to be, you know, doing TPO analysis.
Okay. And then attachment C, which is a fairly lengthy, interesting document. Thank you, Mr. Petros. The, said the, it is a draft document, and his comment is, the document should be finalized before becoming the adopted city SB 743 implementation plan. And then he's asking what public outreach has occurred, so thoughts on that?
Right. The public outreach, we posted all this information on the city website in April for review. We had the May 7th Planning Commission meeting, and so now today, those are the public outreach that we've made. Unfortunately, haven't been able to do physical outreach with COVID.
Yeah, and that went to one of the questions that I think Ms. Stevens had raised, which was the timing of it. I think one of the questions that was, that I saw you had a response for, so I thought it's worth mentioning to the members of the public. When we're looking at the timing of this all, you know, why now versus in six months?
Right. Well, the state established July 1 as the date where VMT analysis would be required in a SEQA document. So we're bringing forward our methodology now. Other cities are doing essentially the same thing because we want to establish our methodology. If we have any changes to the state, we want to document those now before we get into the future studies.
Yeah. This is probably one of those other times when, if people understood some of the impacts of the state's change to VMT, they'd probably have more discussion, but boy, it is really hard to get out and convince people to spend a lot of public outreach time. It is hard, I recognize that. I mean, we just went through a $300 million budget and had almost no public comments, so I get that. I just wanted to point that out. I understand the point. And then the last one is, his comment is, revise the resolution to include adoption of the 2018 state updated SEQA guidelines. Why is a revision to policy K3 warranted for VMT and not warranted for the 2018 state updated SEQA guidelines? Just curious what your thoughts are on that one, too.
Well, I think that our community development might have a better answer as to the remainder of K3. I know that simply I've been involved in adding that section H onto the end, but why we didn't enact the remainder, I'm not entirely certain, but.
That's okay, that's outside the scope.
I think Simone.
It's outside the scope for today, but I'm, I wanted at least, I wanted to make sure I had talked to that. Okay, so I talked timing, I talked through the questions. Okay, those are the questions I had, so.
If I, I'm sorry, if I can add one thing and one of the comments that we received, and I thought it was appropriate, so I think I would suggest that one section of the, which is H2A1, which is the language under the land use project screening, there is, the criteria talks about major transit stop, transit priority area, or high-quality transit corridor. I would recommend we eliminate the transit priority language because the major transit stop and the high-quality transit corridor are essentially, there's an overlap there in definitions, so I think that we don't need to have that transit priority area in that language.
Okay. Okay. All right, Ms. Brenner.
Thank you, Tony. That was one of the questions I had from Jim Mosher's questions about the transit priority area, but I'd like to read one of his statements to you and have you explain to us whether we meet this criteria or not. He says, "Of the paragraph shown at the top of 1332, there was a problem, it was problematic in that it exempts from further analysis projects, quote, 'within a .5 mile of a transit priority area,' end quote, but a transit priority area in itself is, quote, 'the area within .5 mile of a major transit stop.'" So is that what you're talking about? And he said that it would, it exempts a full mile around a major traffic, transit stop?
No, that's exactly what we're getting at as far as taking out that language for transit priority area. It gets a little confusing, the definitions of each different one, because OPR put out very confusing overlapping definitions, but I think if we keep to just major transit stop.
That's why you're taking this section out.
And then it keeps it to that half-mile radius.
Okay, that clarifies, thank you.
Okay. That was a lot of information. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Tony. We'll go to public comment now. All right, we'll take public comment on this item from members of the community room first.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. First of all, I just want you to all be aware that the policy document before you has been changed from what the Planning Commission looked at and made a recommendation about on May 7. It was not just that one paragraph, quite a lot of it has been changed. And the fact that the 50-page or so threshold guide apparently has not been revised at all, I would guess is perhaps because it hasn't been scrutinized as carefully as the K3 policy part. And as to the small number of public comments on this that could in part be due tonight to holding the council meeting at naught hour. I do have another comment, though, which is, the staff report mentions that they're recommending not just this, which was looked at by the Planning Commission, but also some cleanup language, which has never been reviewed by anybody. And that's your last attachment D. And I wanted to bring to your attention a question that I've raised at the last zoning administrator meeting. This is in reference to page 13-115. SEQA decisions made by cities often lead to litigation, and there's a paragraph here referring to the need of the applicant to indemnify the city. I've noticed that the zoning administrator meetings, the applicant is often not the person who has an equity interest in the project. It's often a lobbyist, sometimes it's an architect. You recall the, what was it, 215 Riverside? The applicant was the architect. Is that really the person that we're asking to indemnify the city in case of a lawsuit? Or should this language be rethought and perhaps as chaptered in municipal code? So we're actually asking the person with the interest in the property to indemnify herself, not just some random lobbyist? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the community room on this item? Okay, we'll bring it back. Do we, okay, go ahead. I'll bet I can guess who it is. All right, if you're on the phone, go ahead.
Yes, this is David Tanner calling. I wanted to comment on this item, and there seems to be a background noise. It's not on my end, is it on the city's end?
We're not sure, but we don't hear it, but if, so.
Okay. It's better now. Well, no, it's not. Anyway, I wanted to comment on this, and I appreciate the council taking up my comments. I did write another comment, a letter, which more succinctly explained some of the concerns in late terms, late this afternoon. You may have seen it, you may not have seen it, but this is a tax to reduce greenhouse gas. That's what it is, and the city and all projects subject to SEQA, whether it's a city project or private project, is going to have to pay this tax. And so the exhibit number one that our traffic engineer showed is a different exhibit that is shown on attachment three, the implementation plan, so that's a draft plan. This is new information the public haven't seen, but it still brings the point home that these areas, if there are projects there that meet these screening criteria, will not be paying the tax. And these are based on the presumption that these types of projects will not generate a significant amount of vehicle miles traveled. The problem is that SEQA is predicated upon the findings based on evidence, not on presumptions. And if you look at the technical appendices, item C, which provides the guidance, and search for the word presumption, it is all over the place. So we have a risk if we do a SEQA document that is based on a presumption that it could be challenged without substantial evidence. And that's why I'm requesting that the council change the resolution, which is inconsistent in some cases with the technical appendices, the draft technical appendices, to require that all of these decisions be based on technical analysis, or that they be based on substantial evidence, I'm sorry. And also, I question the use of the county average. While our city traffic engineer said this was OPR suggestion to use the county average, that's true, but it's out of context. They use this to suggest that large counties that have large areas of open space not try and conduct the VMT analysis on the whole county in the open space, but to concentrate on a smaller portion of the county in order to get a more accurate representation of total VMT. So the devil is in the details. I think this needs a lot more analysis. It should go to the public. I think if people were asked what VMT means, very few will know, and even fewer will know what these concepts mean, so I would urge the council to reschedule this for final action after the citizens have an opportunity to review this. Thank you, bye.
Thank you. Any others? Okay. I've got a couple other follow-up questions. Yeah, Mr. Petros, you haven't had a chance to speak, come on up. So I had two questions. The first one is, if you could follow up on what Mr. Tanner was just saying about inconsistencies on that. The second question is, there's been a lot of requests for the governor to delay implementation of VMT. I know, are you going to speak to that? I just want to, I don't want to step on your, okay. I just want to let council know that under the legislative platform, I do have the ability to write a letter requesting the delay of the implementation. I do plan on doing that. We don't have sufficient time to bring it back for a resolution, so I just wanted to alert council to that. I think that, given especially the public comments we've received from, you know, good members of our community, as well as members of the building community, too, it doesn't seem that this is one of those things that too many people in our community are clamoring for. So anyway, I am going to be doing that under the legislative platform. That being said, if the governor did agree to delay implementation, what does that mean for us moving forward with K3 and, you know, and whatnot? So those are the two questions. You can answer them in either order.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. First of all, you know me, but for the record, Tony Petros, principal with LSA Associates, and I just would let you know that I have been a part of this discussion since 2013, the moment that this bill was passed into law, and I am now working with over 20 agencies around the state, including the county of Orange and other cities in Orange County, Los Angeles County, and the Central Valley, doing just this threshold work. I apologize if Mr. Tanner was given the presumption that this was a tax. It is not. There are two distinct issues here. These are the SEQA guidelines, how to evaluate projects according to the California Environmental Quality Act. There is also talk throughout the United States about a VMT user fee to replace the gas tax. Two completely separate items. What you have before you is the way you would measure projects for impacts in the city to comply with SEQA. There is no tax, there is no extraction, there is mitigation, as you would have in any circumstance on a SEQA document. It is not a tax. Furthermore, as it regards to presumption, the technical advisory presented by the Office of Planning and Research in Sacramento is the document that provides the substantial evidence for their approach to evaluating VMT impacts. This is rife with all of their reasons why they believe what they are producing is the correct way to go about things. Because of the language of SEQA and its legal standing, presumption is a term used throughout, but the presumption is supported by the technical and substantial evidence provided in this document. To depart from this document, where the city is doing in the example of the 300 ADT, we have provided substantial evidence, and we have done that in this phone book where a number of technical analyses are provided to provide you legal cover. Each one of those analyses has been under the direction of the city attorney's office so that we have constant feedback that, in fact, we do have that legal review. So nothing here is presumptive. It is based on technical analysis and substantial evidence. The reason why the county was selected for purposes of the region is it is the greater catchment area for all of the trips coming out of Newport Beach. The guidance document says, determine a region that most of your trips fall within. And lo and behold, that happens to be the county of Orange. That also happens to be the region that Irvine, the seven cities in northern, northern Orange County, their collective are using, Santa Ana is using, Anaheim is using, Costa Mesa is using, and as the author of the county of Orange's thresholds, the county of Orange happens to be using. It also happens to be the definition that OCTA is presenting for purposes of this analysis. So that really more responds to maybe some of Mr. Tanner's clarifications. As it relates to your delay, though, very, very good question, and there are a number of agencies, primarily in the Central Valley, that have taken it upon themselves and have already written into a two-year delay for purposes of review or enactment of 743. Most recently, in their last city council meeting, Irvine voted to adopt a delay. I think theirs was only for a year, though. What I know in the governor's office, that correspondence is falling on deaf ears, so it's very unlikely that it will have an effect, but that we still would make a strong suggestion that those that believe that this is a hindrance to economic development, that it is a hindrance to the housing crisis that we are all facing right now, please make that statement.
Okay. I appreciate that. I'm sure the governor will listen to me. All right, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you.
Whoa, whoa.
Yeah, maybe he'll take your call now. Mr. Petros, you thought that since you're off council, you'd never be criticized by Mr. Mosher again.
Yeah.
And boy, were you wrong.
Boy, was I wrong.
Just a couple things.
Thank you.
So, no, thank you. So it's not a tax.
No.
We can submit requests to delay it, but we have no power locally, correct? It's up to the governor to decide.
The law has already been passed, and the law, in the law, it says it shall be live, if you will, July 1, 2020.
Okay.
As recently as last week, there have been pleas with Caltrans, for example. Don't do this yet, give us more time. And Caltrans is saying, no, the law says it's 2020. You would have to amend the law.
And so what are the consequences if we don't pass this tonight?
That you fall strictly under the OPR guidance document with no flexibility that has been written into your implementation. We have tried to provide as We have tried to provide as much flexibility for you to entertain good projects and address housing issues. If you don't, then you are stuck with what Sacramento would tell you to do.
So tonight's action is not a tax, provides flexibility, and we really have no choice. It's either we do this tonight or we get Sacramento's version, which is more rigid.
It's an untenable situation, to be sure.
Perfect, thank you. I'm going to ask a quick question of Mr. Bryan.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is it your opinion as well that this is not a tax?
Yes.
And you agree with the distinction made by Mr. Petros?
Yes.
Is there any fiscal impact to this item on agenda tonight?
No, it's, there is not.
Meaning, we're not spending money, we're simply?
Correct. We're requiring applicants, project applicants, to actually complete the study.
Is it your opinion as well, as Mr. Petros, is that if we do not do this, we'll have the Sacramento version, which is more rigid than this one we're looking at tonight?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll make the motion to approve staff recommendation with the modification Mr. Bryan mentioned during his staff report. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hurdman. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to our next item, which is item number 14, which is addressing the resolution of intention to renew the Corona del Mar Business Improvement District levy assessments and fixed time and place for public hearing. I don't believe we need a staff report on this. Okay, any questions or discussion? All right, we'll go out to public comment on this item. Do we have any public comment on item number 14 from the community room?
Mr. Mayor, this is Bernie Svalstad, chairman of Business Improvement District of Corona del Mar. I think this proposal will work for Corona del Mar Business Improvement District. One thing I think you should think about, one slight change might be expeditious for you and more practical to the council coming, the bid coming back to the council, which may be more than one time, to get something approved on the $40,000 aspect. I would suggest maybe the council have a subcommittee with Joy Brenner being one of the members, of three members, to approve the budget that we have within that because things are going to change this year in regard to Sonos and and the business and as the programs that we promote do good or don't do as well as they should, we could change things. So I'd just make that one recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, do we have any calls on this item? All right, we'll bring it back. Any, Mr. Muldoon?
Yeah, so just so I understand this item, this is a contribution made by the city to the bid of $40,000. Who's the staff on this item? I'm sorry. Oh, Tara, yes.
Tara could speak to it.
So this is a contribution from the general fund to the bid. And is this also ratifying their power to assess their members?
This is the resolution of intention. You would come back to a public hearing at your next meeting to formalize the renewal of the bid and the assessment for next year.
Okay. Now, this is why I'm confused. Have you got communications from the members about the bid?
To my understanding, we have not directly. Councilmember Brenner, was there any attendance at the last board meeting that from outside of the bid members? Not that I know of.
So obviously, we heard from someone in leadership at the bid. And he's happy to receive the funds and wants the bid to continue to go. I'm okay with the funds, but I'm starting to lean towards Mr. O'Neill's camp of not supporting these bids. So I guess, I guess my specific question is, what are we exactly voting on tonight?
So tonight would be the resolution of intention signaling that the council is moving forward to renew the bid for another year. So this outlines the assessments, its budget, how they intend to spend their money next year, and then it would come back for formal council vote at the next meeting to actually renew.
So the $40,000 is included in here because it's part of the the relationship. But we're not voting on the $40,000 tonight.
The, I'm sorry. If I can, the $40,000 came about at the last council meeting as part of, there was an ad hoc committee that looked at business, at the bids and generally, a business, I forget what we called it, business development. Local business advancement, the ad hoc. And as part of their recommendation, they had recommended a one-time $40,000 allocation to assist specifically with COVID-related impacts. And so that was moved forward by the city council to provide that. So that is why that's in this budget that's coming before you here.
I'm going to clarify just a tiny bit on that. The $40,000 that we straw pulled the last meeting was a was a recommendation that $40,000 with the condition that, and that's that's staff recommendation C, which is that the bid provide a detailed plan and budget for how that money would be spent. So I just wanted to clarify that as well. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Muldoon.
So does how we vote on tonight change the $40,000? Are they going to receive it anyways?
We have the $40,000 moving forward in the budget for next fiscal year, but we will not allocate that until the council approves the budget, that
Very good.
how they intend to spend the funds.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And also just, you may stay up there, Tara, I might have a question as I go through this. Just to restate for everyone's public consumption, Mr. Hurdman, Ms. Brenner, and I've been working with staff for the last year to find a course of future organization for our bids. We have more than one bid in the city. And I think we stated this last meeting that we all came to an informal conclusion that the city funding of the bids would cease with this budget year, as we did this in February, and encouraged the bids to find a way forward in terms of organizing their membership in a voluntary type capacity. And then March happened, and COVID. And so what we, our ad hoc committee made an immediate decision to say, well, wait a minute, let's not pull away the financing that the city has been doing for maybe about seven or eight years, $40,000 a year. And we all agreed we wanted to take it away and let them go on their own, but this is not the year to do it. And so we are looking at this $40,000. Also, we'll be dealing in the next item related to the Restaurant Association, two very important dollars to help our businesses in Newport Beach, make the necessary COVID-related expenditures to help them regain a footing so they can get back on track. This is just for the public's consumption. If this all is approved, $160,000 altogether is the only general fund expenditure to help our businesses. We are very fortunate that the federal government and through, and the county through the federal government has provided significant $2.1 million to help our businesses, and that program, as we've talked about, is is moving forward. But this is not an additional amount, but another source of funding for our small businesses, local businesses, to be sure that they have the resources that they need. This is such a perilous time for our businesses. Small businesses in our community could be hanging by a thread whether they continue to exist or not. And this may help our restaurants, and the next item, and our small businesses. So I'm fully supportive of it. I look at it as a one-time only, assuming the economic crisis abates by this time next year. But I'm sure Mr. Hurdman and Ms. Brenner could speak as well, that we feel it's important to support our local businesses, and this is a modest amount to be able to do that. It was already built into the budget. So I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Brenner.
I just wanted to add that a big part of what the city and bid plans to do with their money is lower the member assessments. So it's really a direct benefit to the businesses who are members. So it's it's almost like a pass-through in that we are actually directly benefiting our business members.
Okay. Yep, Mr. Muldoon.
I say, Ms. Brenner, that addresses my exact concern. Because I support the money, but I'm afraid that it's going to be tough for some members to come up with money to join. But this is going to help with the the membership. That's good to hear. It still brings you back to Mayor O'Neill's concern, which is how voluntary is he, but the truth is, there's, there are no consequences essentially if a bid member doesn't pay for the bid membership. So it's a, it's a law without, a boot without a foot, I think is the legal term. It's, it's, it's not consequential, but I still would like to see this phased out. But I'll support it for this time because of the great reasons that councilmembers Dixon and Brenner made. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'll be honest, I'm going to vote against it only because I don't have any intention of voting for it at the next meeting, so I can't pass by section one. Anyway, so let's, let's go ahead and, do we have a motion? All right, moved by Councilwoman Dixon.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Brenner on this one. And so let's go ahead and vote.
With Mayor O'Neill voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
All right. And then we'll go to the next item, item number 15, same thing dealing with the Newport Beach Restaurant Association bid. Any discussion? Okay. Do we have any public comment in the community room on this item? All right. Do we have any calls? Nope, we'll bring it back. I have the exact same comment. I suspect everyone else does, too. So do we have a motion?
I'll move staff recommendation.
Moved by Mr. Hurdman.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Dixon. Let's go ahead and vote.
With Mayor O'Neill voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
All right. Item number 16, annual appointments to boards and commissions. Let me say just a couple of quick things on this. This was a little bit of a strange year, given how many incumbents we had. So I just want to say thank you first off to Mr. Hurdman and Mr. Duffield for helping out on the discussions and reviewing all of the applications and interviewing. And so I'd like to just point out for a moment, we don't usually have this many incumbents. You can kind of see that play out. And so it changed, I'm sure it changed some of the calculus and and whatnot in terms of who we were able to put forward and how many people were putting forward and and whatnot. And so I just, I do want to make sure that I I had pointed that out. And then we don't usually do this, but I'm just going to point out just a couple of quick things on my votes. And we don't usually have a conversation beforehand, so if you'd like to speak, go right ahead. I want to just put a pitch in on our, on the City Arts Commission. Both Patricia Dreyfus and Leonard Simon are fantastic candidates. And I think that the only reason I'm going to recommend to anybody that Patricia gets it is simply because she has lived in the community for decades. Mr. Simon is new to the community, but his former community was well-served by his arts experience, and I think frankly, he ought to be probably the next person on. But I just want to point that out, that both of them are fantastic candidates. And then we did receive a few emails in on appointing on Ms. Stevens to the Planning Commission. And I just want to say two quick things on this. The first one is Debbie's fantastic, and that's why I appointed her on to the Housing Advisory Committee. Or I'm sorry, that's why I nominated her on and why we, as a council, put her on there. If we put her on the Planning Commission, we would lose her off the Advisory Committee. And I just want to point that out, that given the decade, given the longevity of what's, how important that Advisory Committee is and her, her ability to lend the expertise to that, I just want to point out that's, I fully expect that that will essentially have run its course by the next time we have a vacancy or even a vote on the, on the Planning Commission, which is why I put her on, or why we, as a body of nominees, we made sure we put her on, because she was, of all of the non-incumbents, she was by far the best candidate with the expertise that she has for the Planning Commission of all of the people who are the applicants. So it didn't seem right not to list her on there. And so I just wanted to make sure I had pointed that out. And and so I, I make that comment with the understanding that I've always voted for incumbents unless I think that there's a good reason not to vote for the particular incumbent. And so I think that Debbie is going to be someone who will be on our Planning Commission. And frankly, there may be votes for her, and maybe there's a majority of votes for her tonight. I just hate to lose her off of the, off of the Housing, the Housing Committee. And that's why I wanted to at least point out my thought process on this, because we don't normally go into our thought process. Anyway, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. You commented briefly on just the pool of candidates. I just wanted to give a little bit of edification. As many of you know, in the community, a number of women past and present commissioners, and I have loosely, have organized a loosely organized group called Women in Newport Networking. And I saw the need for organizing this group when I first became elected to city council and saw the lack of applicants, the low number, the dearth of female applicants to serve on our boards and commissions, and I thought that was a missed opportunity. I'm not suggesting there was any discrimination. It's just really the applicant pool, as I, wanting to encourage women to become active members of our community and know that they can play a vital role. Many, many women are active in their professional lives or in the community and other nonprofits, and they could serve very effectively. So a win has been a, one event a year to promote awareness of applying for the council appointments. And we always would have a forum in April, March or April, and the city clerk would make a presentation and explain the process. And that, the result of that over the last five years, as we dramatically increased the number of women applicants, when it used to be 80% male and 20% women in 2015, it's been trending 40% women applicants, which is a strong number, up to 45%. This year, we had, we had 40% women applicants in the pool, and only 25% of those applicants have been nominated to the point where we are this evening. Last year, just to go back a couple of years, we had 52% women apply, and 40% of those women were nominated to be considered appointed. And in 2018, 41% of the applicants were women, and 44% were nominated. So again, the number's 40% this year and 25% nominated. So I'll just let the numbers speak for themselves. So I just, we did not have a win forum this year because of COVID, and so that was maybe a missed marketing opportunity. I know we'll have good applicants. I'm not being critical of any of the nominees. We had a good applicant pool by looking at the candidates who were nominated, and they're all outstanding individuals. I just want to remind ourselves that it's important that women make up 50% of the population of Newport Beach, and they should be encouraged to represent, be represented on our boards and commissions. So thank you for my, allowing me to make my little speech. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Brenner.
I'd sort of like to echo a little bit of that, but I think we did have really well-qualified candidates this time. And I wouldn't promote a woman over a more qualified man, but in Debbie's case, there could not be anyone who is more qualified. And I agree about incumbents. If someone's doing a good job, I really always try to appreciate the incumbency and the learning curve and all that sort of thing. But in Debbie Stevens' case, her SEQA experience is something that I think we really need on the Planning Commission. And I also think that we need a broader perspective on the Planning Commission that's not all developer, real estate oriented. So it's not that any, you know, one in that profession is bad. I just think that we need a broader perspective there. And, and the fact that I've been trying to get Debbie onto the Planning Commission for years, I can't very well vote against her now. And I'm, I'm hopeful that this is a longer-term appointment so that her impact could be greater, even though I really wanted her on our Housing Element Update Committee as well. So I just wanted to say that. And and one other thing, I know a lot of these And and one other thing, I know a lot of these people personally, and I tried to take the personality and the relationship out of it as much as possible and really look at the qualifications and how those particular qualifications could benefit the board or commission and maybe give us a little bit of perspective that we don't have currently.
All right. Okay, now we'll we'll go out to public comment on this. Do we have any public comment in the in the room?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. First, I wanted to say I'm very pleased to see the discussions you're holding tonight, which we don't normally hear. I myself wanted to add a little context to this to point out that some of the boards and commissions that you'll be making appointments to have a very long heritage. When this city was incorporated in 1906, as you may or may not know, it was governed by a body that was called not a city council, but a Board of Trustees of five members. That Board of Trustees on June 7, 1920, exactly 100 years ago, last Sunday, created our city library system and our separate Board of Library Trustees. So they are now 100 years old. And I'm a little surprised that the 100th birthday of our library system has not been otherwise noted tonight. Some of these, I know less about their history. The Civil Service Board, though, does have qualifications and procedures that are in our city charter. I remain troubled that you have four nominees when the charter requires five. And I also have not heard for sure that the four nominees that you see have actually been voted on as they are required by our city charter to be by our classified employees, the fire and police employees, and are not simply the four applications that were received and have been passed on without that vote of approval by those employee groups. As to the difficulty of this year finding a full complement of nominees, not just for the Civil Service Board, but for the Planning Commission, the Building and Fire Board of Appeals and the City Arts Commission, where there should be four nominees, I would suggest part of that is your policy A2 direction to the city clerk to discard applications after two years. A year ago, I thought we heard that there would be some movement to change that. I think many people have applied for these, and we have many qualified people. Their applications have simply disappeared, so the Appointment Committee does not have a full complement to look at. Finally, the reappointment of incumbents, according to your policy A2, is a reward for outstanding service. It's not supposed to be something that is awarded automatically to people. And as to the question of somebody serving simultaneously on the Planning Commission and the Housing Element Update Advisory Committee, the latter committee is not a standing committee. And I haven't looked at its enabling document, but we do not have a rule against our rule is against people being on two standing committees at the same time. I wanted you to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right, do we have any call in? Okay, we'll bring it back. Mr. Muldoon.
I just wanted to add the great interesting fact. So the members of the council were called trustees, and the mayor was called the president. So Mr. O'Neill, we get you a little flag for the front of your car and running through the street, president. But it's it's a great memory, and thanks for the history lesson, Mr. Mosher. And I just want to say that every time I have someone who calls me, especially a friend, they want to get on one of these committees, remind them that it's really a long game and it's a big honor to be chosen. And those who keep applying often get it just because they stick with it. Another thing that matters, how well they get along with others. And we have a lot of candidates here who have very good reputations and look forward to working with the ones that are chosen and working with other ones down the road. I'm sure that many other people not chosen tonight will have a chance down the road. Thank you.
Thanks. By the way, I did check in with Mr. Heatherston on that fact. And apparently, they view the opening of the Balboa Branch in 1929 as the start of the public library system. So trust me, I would have found something to celebrate this year, but not so much. Anyway, so with that, we're going to vote, so please tear off your your top page here. Fill it out, and Ms. Brown will come collect it.
And I just want to make a note that in order to be nominated, the candidate has to have at least four votes. I will read the votes for Board of Library Trustees first. Councilmember Brenner votes for Paul Watkins. Councilmember Muldoon, Paul Watkins. Councilmember Duffield, Paul Watkins. Councilmember Dixon, Paul Watkins. Councilmember Hurdman, Paul Watkins. Mayor Protem Avery, Paul Watkins. And Mayor O'Neill, Paul Watkins. So he is reappointed to the Board of Library Trustees. For Building and Fire Board of Appeals, there are two vacancies. Instead of one moment. All council members voted for Sam Noir and Raleigh Pulaski, so they are both reappointed to the Building and Fire Board of Appeals. For City Arts Commission, there are two vacancies. Councilmember Brenner votes for Marie Little and Leonard Simon. Councilmember Muldoon, Marie Little, Leonard Simon. Councilmember Duffield, Patricia Dreyfus. Marie Little for Councilmember Dixon, Marie Little, Leonard Simon. Councilmember Hurdman, Marie Little, Leonard Simon. Council Mayor Protem Avery, Patricia Dreyfus and Marie Little. Mayor O'Neill, Patricia Dreyfus and Marie Little. Marie Little is reappointed, and Leonard Simon received four votes, so he is appointed. Patricia Dreyfus received three votes. For Civil Service Board of Appeal or Civil Service, there are two vacancies. Councilmember Brenner voted for Robin Grant and Howard Herzog. Councilmember Muldoon, Robin Grant, Howard Herzog. All seven council members voted for Robin Grant and Howard Herzog, so they are both reappointed to Civil Service Board. For Harbor Commission, there is one vacancy. Councilmember Brenner voted for Kevin Kramer. Councilmember Muldoon voted for Gary Williams. Councilmember Duffield, Gary Williams. Councilmember Dixon, Gary Williams. Councilmember Hurdman, Gary Williams. Council Mayor Protem Avery, Gary Williams. And Mayor O'Neill, Gary Williams. Gary Williams received six votes. Kevin Kramer received one, so Gary Williams is appointed to Harbor Commission. So for Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission, PBNR, there is one vacancy. Councilmember Brenner voted for David Granoff. Quick look. All seven council members voted for David Granoff, so he is reappointed to PBNR. For Planning Commission, there are two vacancies. Councilmember Brenner voted for Debbie Stevens and Eric Wigan. Councilmember Muldoon voted for Curtis Elmer and Eric Wigan. Councilmember Duffield, Curtis Elmer and Eric Wigan. Councilmember Dixon, Debbie Stevens and Eric Wigan. Councilmember Hurdman, Debbie Stevens, Eric Wigan. Mayor Protem Avery, Curtis Elmer and Eric Wigan. And Mayor O'Neill, Curtis Elmer and Eric Wigan. Curtis Elmer received four votes. Debbie Stevens received three votes, and Eric Wigan received seven. So Eric Wigan and Curtis Elmer are reappointed.
All right, thank you very much. Move to item 17, the Advanced Meter Infrastructure Project. We've had a good discussion on this in the past and a pretty lengthy staff report. Does anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict on this issue related to the component that involves wireless telecommunications in my prior employment in the business.
Got it, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Just just a second then. Okay, I'm going to look around. Does anyone need a staff report on this?
No.
No, all right. Did you have a question, Ms. Dixon? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't see your.
That's okay. Well, I assume there wasn't going to be a staff report, but I'll let Mr. Makoyevich speak anyway. He has been working a long time. This is such a significant capital project for this city to bring us into the modern technology age. So I would like to ask you a couple of softball questions. How will this improve our water metering reading system, our process? Do we have the skill sets in our employee base to do the software development, maintenance and programming and all that's involved? And is how will it be more efficient, faster, better, smarter than what we're currently doing?
Okay, yes, Councilmember Dixon, very briefly, I brought a book here just to share with you. This is an old meter reading book from the 1960s. And so as you can imagine, a meter reader would go to your house and get a pen and paper, kneel down, open up the cap and read the meter and write down the amount, and they would actually calculate your water bill on this very book right here. And so that was a technology that we're dealing with. And today, it's a little better because they have a handheld device. But we have a rule, they can't use thumbs, they have to use their index fingers when they're punching it in because that way they have the least amount of mistakes that way. I'm kidding. But but it's still manually inputted that way. And so we're switching to this technology where it'll send a signal once a day and we'll be able to receive that information. And then the customers also have access to that information every single day as well. And it's going to help tremendously. Now, in terms of our skill set and being prepared for this transition, that was the purpose of the proof of performance. And we did that testing with the meters. We integrated it and with the city's billing with the city's IT system and downloading information. And so the next step is now full implementation as well as the customer access and billing information.
Now, how long is the full implementation? What's the timeline?
It's going to take about two and a half years to complete everything. And, you know, it does come with a large grant that we were able to secure from the federal government, which makes it that much more affordable. But customers will start noticing work beginning right after the summertime.
And for customers, remember when we, I remember when we went through the drought and we were your department was working diligently with residents who were wondering why their water bill was still going up and they weren't using any water and what's going on? And they know that they've turned off all their faucets and we'd send somebody out and find out that there was a leak somewhere, but it had been going on for weeks. Now we'll be able to identify a leak or a problem or an issue instantly.
Correct. I mean, that's one of the major benefits for the for the public is is that this has leak detection capabilities. So if you have a running toilet or you have a major water leak, it's basically detecting that you're having continuous water usage. It sends us an alarm. We're able to either contact you directly or go out there, and we can resolve an issue within a day as opposed to 30 days or 60 days later. And so it's quite helpful and should save people water in that regards. And I'll just add too that, like the mayor said, this has been long planned and prepared for in terms of all of our master plans and and what we're trying to do. And we're going from what I would call, you know, kind of dial gauges to more digital gauges.
I just want to commend you and your department for bringing this forward this many years that you've been working on it through the master plan and to identify this and getting the federal securing the federal grant. That's huge, so thank you.
Mr. Avery.
There's a giant black widow that lives in my vault where the water meter is. Is this going to disrupt his home? And by that, I mean, what changes are actually going to happen in the vault there?
Okay. So so basically, in the vault, you know, a meter crew is going to come out and they're going to turn off your water for about 15 to 30 minutes. And they're going to unscrew the old meter, pop in the new meter, hook up the wire, put in a new meter lid, and you'll be back in service with less than 30 minutes. And that's going to be the most common installation. It goes very quickly, and and then you'll be back in full service. I don't know about the Black Widow may not.
I'll try to be home when that happens.
Okay, thanks. If I could, I would just like to also recognize in the audience Stephen Catron and Casey Parks, both utilities managers who've been working on this project and for many years, and I appreciate everything that they've done to put this together. But that was the easy part. Now comes implementation. It's a little harder. Anything else? Nope, all right. We'll go out to public comment on this item. Do we have any public comment on this item? All right, any calls? Nope, all right, we'll bring it back. Any other discussion? All right, I'll move staff recommendation. Seconded by Mr. Avery. Let's go, let's go ahead and vote. Bless you.
The motion carries unanimously, six zero.
All right, before we go to the next item, we need to fix one quick vote on the budget item, actually, to register an additional conflict. So we'll go back to that item solely for the purposes of amending the vote to reflect a conflict. So, Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I was looking so closely at this list is I missed one. Although, Mr. Harp has determined that on budget items, you can vote generally. And after a cue yourself, I wanted to be extra cautious. So I'm adding this item, item number four. So we mentioned five, five, 11 and 12, but item four as well. Superior Avenue West Coast Highway Intersection Improvements also has a wireless component to it, so I'm lodging a recusal on that due to prior employment in wireless industry. Is that correct, Mr. Harp? Thank you.
And that's good enough without needing a revote, correct, Mr. Harp?
No, that's fine.
Okay. All right, we'll move into COVID update. I, you know, I neglected to I meant to do this during the the council announcements, but I do want to make sure we reference the Small Business Relief Grant Program Administration. So if you don't have it, if you don't have it readily available.
We do have that as in part of the section two.
Oh, we do?
That we provide an update on, so.
Okay, then go right ahead and you can, yes, go ahead then, Ms. Leung.
All right, and thank you. And given kind of the lateness on the meeting, we'll kind of get right into it. Just want to be able to provide you an update. I think the biggest update right now with with the pandemic and the response is the state and now the county and the city following and moving into the next stages. We are in stage two, and with the county's attestation to allow the county to move further in with guidelines and authorization from the state, we're continuing to do so as part of those efforts. And this past Friday on June 5, the State Department of Public Health released updated guidelines. And it was in particular areas that we were especially looking forward to receiving that guidance in particularly in our summer programming areas. The key on this, though, is the additional guidelines guidelines have come out. I'll go over the specific areas in just a second. But the key part of this is that the county needs to approve our Orange County in moving forward in these areas. So that's what we are waiting for. What I have heard, I did receive an update today from the county CEO this afternoon. And based on discussion at the board meeting this morning, that we are anticipating that the approval for these areas to be provided by this Friday. So potentially this Thursday, there's a press conference and to be in effect for Friday, which is when the state said the soonest it could be allowed for. So that puts us in a very good place. And I have a couple of the directors coming up to talk just at a high level of the specifics on that of what we're preparing for with these guidelines in place and with the authorization to move forward. So with that condition here, the particular areas, you can see the bulleted ones noted up here. And I'll just note for us in particular are the day camps. That really affects us with our summer programming, including our junior guard program. We'll talk about that. And you can see some other areas that are very helpful. The hotel, which is also for nonessential travel as well to be happening, and the full array on the restaurants to be happening, and the full array on the restaurants in restaurant dining and areas there. But in particular, we've been doing a lot of work and looking at things in preparation now for our summer programming. And this is obviously a little late for us. We're already in June. So there will have to be modifications. And the other thing I do want to make sure that everyone understands is while these can be open, they have to be within the guidelines that lay out a lot of the strict social distancing, cleaning, monitoring, and also that if there are cases of COVID, then you need to actually shut the program down for a fourteen-day period. So we need to go through and make sure that we're following through all those. And really, when we're looking at setting up these programs, we have to be mindful of those parameters to ensure that we have the safety of not just the participants, but also the employees who are supporting these programs and running them, you know, our own employees as well through all that. So with that, I am going to turn it over first to Laura Detwiler, who's gonna talk about our summer recreation programs. And then we'll also move into the brief update on the junior lifeguard program. And then at the end, talk on the business grants. I'll turn it over to Laura.
Great. Thank you, Grace. And good evening, Mayor O'Neil, members of City Council. I'm Laura Detwiler, your Recreation and Senior Services Director. And as Grace has mentioned, we are impatiently awaiting some direction this Friday to be able to move forward with implementing our summer programs. So there are quite a few guidelines that we have been able to refer to over the last month or so, most recently the ones that came out on June the fifth, which really give us some foundation and strategies to be able to move forward in a safe manner to implement some of these programs. So our staff has been reviewing these guidelines. One of the things that is very clear to me is this summer will look very different than our previous summers. And that comes with the guidelines and modifications to make sure that our staff and the participants are safe in these programs. So that will, some of the things that it will change, it will limit the number of programs that we can offer, the number of kids that can participate in them, the duration of time the camp will take place. What we're focusing on is being able to implement our outdoor camps. And there are a variety that we will be able to offer. And we'll also be looking at camps on the beach, which will include surf and water safety, and then variety of recreation classes for youth and adults. You're aware of the virtual programming that we've been working on. We continue to add classes to that. It's a very robust program. We're getting some great feedback from our community members as well. So we'll continue to add to that in the coming months. And then we've also given green light to our contract instructors to start private lessons in the area of surf, pickleball, tennis, and personal training. And I can tell you that pickleball is off to a mad rush. So I wish we had a lot more courts than we had right now to be able to accommodate all the interests that is coming in from the community. So these are the areas that we're gonna focus on. Our community centers are not open yet, so our emphasis will be looking at what we can provide in our park facilities. So I want to talk a little bit, too, about some of the amenities that we envision being able to open once we get the green light this week. That's gonna be our beach volleyball courts as well as our basketball courts. We're getting a lot of feedback from the community. They're anxious to see those amenities back in action. We do envision that it'll take us about three weeks to get our volley, beach volleyball courts back up in entirety. We have over sixty-six courts out on our beachfront. It'll take us a couple of weeks to get our basketball hoops back up and running as well, and make sure that those facilities are prepared for the community to use. We do still have some closures. Our playgrounds are closed due to the concerns related to social distancing and touchpoints on those surfaces. We are hearing that our community pools will get the green light as well this week to open up. I know you're aware that we utilize school district pools for our summer programs. We have communicated to the school district that we are eager to get in there. They have a whole nother set of guidelines that they have to go through to make sure that they can accommodate their student population first and then potentially open it up to the community as well. So we're in close communication with them, and they know we're eager to get in there. Our community centers, I mentioned, are closed. Also, the Oasis Senior Center. And I do want to highlight the work that continues to go on through the Oasis and our staff over there. Even though our doors are closed to the public, lots is taking place. We're delivering hundreds of meals a day. Our transportation program is keeping people getting to their essential medical appointments and grocery shopping. We've done drive-by parades to our homebound seniors, which has been a hoot. Coffee talk on Zoom. There are a lot of things that our staff are doing to continue to keep our senior population connected and active. We do have fitness regimens that we put together for them on a weekly basis to keep them moving as well. So our staff has continued to do some tremendous work with a lot of constraints that we've had placed on us with COVID. Everything that we do brings the community together, and we've not been able to do that. So you can imagine it's been incredibly frustrating for us. It's been frustrating for the community. We do want to thank them for their patience, some not so patient. But those that have been patient with us, I want to assure you that we are studying this. And our staff is committed to finding solutions to some of the challenges this will present in providing some type of summer program for our community. So I think in closing, I just want to say to our mayor, I promise you, we're gonna give you something to celebrate this year, okay?
Yeah. So I've got a quick question, then, Ms. Brenner. Okay. On the playgrounds and pools, so the playgrounds specifically, I get asked this probably mostly because my kids are the same demographic as everyone else who would actually be going and playing on the playgrounds. So a lot of parents are asking, what would it, what is it gonna take? Like, what would have to happen for us to be able to essentially allow playgrounds to kind of reopen? Because I recognize, I recognize the touchpoint issue. I do, for sure, for sure. But I've got a lot of parents talking to me about the fact that kids are less...
This is a tough one. It's a really tough one because you can't assure social distancing. They're very concerned about the touchpoints and the surf, the metal surface, and how COVID remains on those types of services, surfaces. There's been a lot of direction that's been somewhat vague. It is very clear on playgrounds that they are not to be open to the community. Could it come in phase three? Maybe?
If I can, oh, sorry. If I can add to, I know, this is one that we've certainly asked from the cities to the county level. And the county has also conveyed that to the state. And that specifically on playgrounds, the state has said it's not in this current guidance now, but in the near future. Now, what the near future means, I don't know exactly, but I do know it's being brought up repeatedly up to the state level.
No, that's good to hear because that's something that I get questions on all the time. And this is admittedly one of those times where we are obviously the agency that people feel comfortable reaching out and touching because we're here. So it's always been difficult throughout this entire process to defer to other agencies. But I just needed to know that so I could speak intelligently to it, Ms. Brenner.
Oh, and if I can also add just one thing to that is the other area that is a lot of feedback is up to the state are sports leagues as well, you know, organized...
So organized sports, they're not allowing in this next...
Right now, but in the near future is the state comment right now. And again, that's something that's, the state has alerted to, I think, quite frequently.
Sure. That's why we just saw news saying that high school sports is in limbo, simply because that, okay. Yeah, okay. I understand that better now. All right, Ms. Brenner.
I was just gonna say, I think that our citizens always appreciate the amenities that we offer at the city, but they're going to appreciate them even more once we are able to open everything up. And I had a question about libraries. Did you mention libraries? Did anyone mention?
No. And libraries is not in the guidance yet. I think the question with the library is, again, is it tends to be a gathering place and trying to ensure that that security and the amount, you know, on the, just understanding better on the viruses and how they stay on things. So libraries aren't in this current guidance. I think it's either further in stage three is what I believe that is.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Ms. Dixon. So he'd like to speak to junior, junior guards, so...
Oh, oh. Well, first of all, as we've gone through these updates every two weeks, just as remarkable, the capability and adaptability of our staff to just come up with innovative new programs to keep our community engaged. So I really, really commend the staff for what you're doing across the line. And soon to hear about junior guards. What is with Oasis, those poor seniors who really would love to, I mean, that's so part of their mental and physical health. What is the state, the Politburo ruling on?
That's another area that's very clear. They're, you know, sixty-five and above is a high-risk population, and they're very concerned about social gathering and the risk involved.
But if, I mean, with the social distancing, that still can't overcome. I mean, if they, well, anyway. Will they never open?
No, I think they will. I think they will eventually open. It's just not right now. So we're doing all we can to continue to offer those types of programs to them, keep them engaged and in touch with them.
Sounds like you're doing a great job. Thank you.
If it's this year, I want to do another ribbon cutting. All right, Mr. Avery.
What's it been like with people calling in and just, I'm sure the phones are going off the hook, when things are gonna open, right?
We've been inundated. I'm not, I'm not gonna lie to you. We've been inundated. The phones ring every day. Why aren't you doing this? And so I think what's, what's helped us is we've been very consistent in our application and following the guidelines and making sure that we're doing things safely and that we've got good background behind the decisions that we're making. And we've been very consistent with that. So, you know, one of the things that we have really gotten a lot out of is seeing how much use our parks have gotten. And our parks have always been valued by our residents here, but I've never, and I've been here for a very long time, I've never seen our parks utilized the way they're being utilized right now. And we're seeing families together out there, riding bikes, just spending time out in our parks with no deadlines for when games start, nothing organized, just out there being together. And it's really been, it's been refreshing, refreshing to watch. So I'm thankful that we've kept our park system open. I think that has helped our community out tremendously.
Great. Could you just talk about Marina Park? What is going to be available there and what's not, sort of, going forward?
Right. Well, obviously, the open space is available, and our beachfront has been heavily used in the last month, especially when things have gotten warmed up. We are currently looking at hopefully opening up the sailing bay and being able to offer rentals for kayaks, stand-up paddleboards. We think we can achieve the guidelines that are set forth for that area. We are hopeful as well that we might be able to start some family classes or single classes in our sailboats as well. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to get some boating programs in there as well throughout the summer. So...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Hurdman?
Laura, obviously, the next question's gonna be the very last entry there, program registration waitlist, sign up now. You want to talk about the mechanics of that for a minute? Are you taking signups?
We are. And that's one of the things that we have maintained over the last couple of months. You recall, our Camp Newport program goes out about three months in advance of summer. And so as soon as that went out, we started taking registration. So we've, what we did stop is collecting registration fees for our programs. But we are allowing our participants to sign up on a waitlist. So when we make a determination on what we'll be able to offer and what's moving forward, we'll be able to quickly reach out to our registrants and let them know that the classes go. We'll handle the remaining portion of the registration process. So I did look at the numbers today just to see where we are. We're at about a quarter of where we normally are in comparison to this time last summer. So, but I would imagine, once we make a determination on what we'll offer, we'll push that out through social media and our direct contacts and let folks know that those programs are available to participate in. So I think this waitlist process is gonna work out well for us. And I do encourage families, if they are considering camps, to look on our website and see what might be of interest to them. And I'm hoping we're gonna be able to accommodate them.
Okay. Awesome. Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
Did you want to ask questions first, or do you want them to present and then ask? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neil, members of City Council, Jeff Boils, your fire chief. I'm gonna back that up because I am not there yet. Since this is actually a COVID update, I did prepare some of the every-two-week COVID statistics for you really quick. As of this afternoon, Orange County has seven thousand six hundred and fourteen positive COVID cases with one hundred and eighty-five total deaths to date. Newport Beach has a hundred and sixty-one positive cases. Our call volume for the fire department has begun to mirror our 2019 responses finally, because you might remember in March, April, and May, we dropped off significantly in 2020 as opposed to 2019. After Memorial Day, when people started coming back to the beach and restaurants and things started to open, our call load started to increase. We've responded to two hundred and ninety-six, what we call enhanced precaution symptomatic patients since March first. We've transported fourteen known COVID-positive patients in the back of our ambulances to local hospitals. The last one was June sixth. And you may remember, I've reported that every time we do transport a known positive COVID patient, we take all the personnel that had direct contact with that patient. We put them under medical watch for fourteen days where we monitor symptoms, temperature, medical conditions, and just make sure that they don't become symptomatic. We've had sixty-eight of those since we begun this. We currently have five under our medical watch until June twentieth. Having said that, we don't have any firefighters or lifeguards that have tested positive at this point, which has been really good because we do have a fire department to the north of us that just experienced six positive firefighter cases, two of which are in the hospital, one's in ICU now. So it is still very real. It is still there. It goes without saying, we've had a busy couple of weeks since I spoke to you guys last with, obviously, with the beach population increasing and people coming back, our continued COVID responses. We had a couple of fires this past week. We had the protests that we were involved with, the budget planning and readjusting there, and obviously preparing for wildland season. You may see on the news that wildland fires are starting to kick up as well. So having said all that, we're gonna shift gears to junior lifeguards. And I know you had just asked Laura what type of response she was getting. And I know some of you have been CC'd on the emails that I've been getting inundated with. They come in faster than I can respond to them, quite frankly. I can sit at my computer and just watch them drop in. So we've had quite a few. It's obvious that our community is very passionate about this program. I will preface this next statement with the fact that all of this is still contingent, as City Manager Grace Leung said, on county health. And the county public health officers, as you guys know, resigned yesterday. So we have a new one in place, but the county is still trying to pick up the pieces and readjust and figure out where they're going to land. But having said that, we do have plans to move forward with three separate facilities here, one at the Newport Pier, one at the Balboa Pier, and one at Marina Park. We feel that we can accommodate all four age groups from the As, the Bs, the Cs, and the Ds, putting them in separate areas. The As are set to start on June twenty-third and complete their full seven-week program. They've already begun registering. The plan is for the Bs, Cs, and the Ds to start the Monday after the Fourth of July, given the fact the county public health will release it. That would be a five-week program for them. But once they get started, then everything would be, for the most part, normal, other than the first two weeks cut off. While separating the participants isn't ideal in nature, we'd like to keep them all together in the hot dog dinners, monster miles, all those fun things that they do. They will be separated for 2020. It's just the best that we can do for now. It creates its whole set of different challenges. We have to move equipment around. We have to buy new equipment. But we think that we can get there. I'd like to thank Laura that was just up here and the recreation staff for agreeing to share their Marina Park facility with us. Since UCI moved out and they won't be having indoor programming, we're gonna coexist in there for the summer of 2020, her recreation staff and our lifeguard personnel that will be the instructors. So they'll need a facility to work out of. The program does come at an increased cost because we'll have to reduce the ratio of instructor to students. So there will be a cost involved how we get there. We can, we'll talk about that next time around. I have some ideas of how we can get there. But it will cost a significant amount of money because we'll have to hire more lifeguard staff. We'll have to purchase more equipment. So having said that, I want to give the lifeguards a lot of credit. I've been pushing on them quite a bit for the last several weeks. They've remained very flexible, very nimble. They're trying to scramble now to get their basic lifeguard academy finished up so that we could hire all of our new lifeguards, put them into put them into towers, and pull some other lifeguards out of the towers to do the junior guard program. They have to work on their summer staffing. They have to adjust their budgeting. They have to buy more equipment. So there's a lot that goes into this, a lot of moving parts. And, and, and we're, we're waiting for the guidance from the county and we finally got it from the state. And that was the difficult part. We couldn't just move forward, as we talked about with high school athletics and things of that nature. So although this is extremely exciting for us, it's been a lot of work. And I'll have Chief Halfide come up and give you a few more details on how we expect the program to run. But trust me, as a, as I said last time, as a parent of, of two very active teenagers, I would like to see a program exist in a healthy, safe manner as well. So we're getting there. We just have to do it with, with safety in mind. And I'll tee it up for you. Chief Halfide.
Thank you, Chief Boils, Mayor O'Neill, council members. I'm pleased to come back and be able to tell you that we have decided that we can have a roadmap to be able to figure out how to do our program. A couple of things, by having it in multiple locations, we minimize the number of children in any one location and the number of staff, which is very important. We're going to end up increasing our staff to lower the student-teacher ratios. We're going to decrease the group size to limit the number of children and keep them in stable groups. There'll be no large activities. There really won't be any mixing of groups. Pardon me. We'll have extra decontamination process for our equipment, for our common areas. And so there's several hurdles that we have to do, but our staff has been very agile in trying to figure out how to do this and how we can make it work. We just finished our registration process for our As, our oldest, and we had about 130 out of the potential. And so we had about a 20% drop from people who finished our swim test in March and did that. So we expect that that would be about the same numbers. So that would put us, I'm not going to do the math on the fly, but it's about 250 children less out of the 1,350. So we would expect 1,100 children at least. We look forward to doing, we appreciate the partnership with the recreation. We've been in talks with them to be able to share some of that space at Marina Park. And we look forward to coming back in two weeks to give you more details. If we were able to run the program, given the guidance from the county, that we would start registration as early as next Monday and that the program would start on July 6th, Ben Carlson Day, kind of a fitting tribute, and that we would run for five weeks. One of the questions we've gotten is about the cost. The cost will actually, there won't be a reduction because the overall cost, even though it's five weeks, for all the additional staffing and equipment, it will actually be more. And so that's, we'll come back to you with some creative ideas of how we can help bridge that extra gaps. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. I can't thank you enough, chief. I want the community to know that the second we did an A1 agenda and you heard from a couple of us on the dais, you started working right away. And I know that that's what you wanted to find a way to get to. Yes, you were being very cautious and considerate and we appreciate that. And before even all seven of us raised our hands to support reinitiating the program, from what I understand, you and staff were on board doing everything you could, which is a reflection, I think, of, of your humility and your dedication to the community and to this program. So thank you so much for that. I really appreciate it. It's really exciting news. I think that it's going to be happening, some changes, but I think that it's, it's always good to change things and it could be an even better year. One suggestion I might have is that for the equipment costs that we expect will be more to the city, some of those equipment pieces you might be able to offer during registration as a direct pass-through for parents to buy if they don't want to share any equipment. I think a lot of parents would be willing to do that, wanting to help us avoid the cost of the city, but also maybe they want their child to have their own item. Two, a fundraising event. I think that if we have to, we could easily do an event to help raise money for this. Any donation given to the city would be earmarked simply for junior guards. It's a 501(c)(3) donation. So if any parents are so inclined, we could do that as well and we could talk about that more, when the staff report comes out about how much the program will cost. I think it's good. There, there are a lot of lifeguards who bartend who probably would be happy to be doing lifeguarding this summer, since bartending might not be as busy this summer. So I think there'll be no shortage of excellent alum of the Newport Beach lifeguard department, probably interested in participating in this program. And I think we're going to have overwhelming support. So I just wanted to thank you for doing the, the research before. And then we want to do more research after I agendize this item. And thank you to my colleagues for, for also giving support and cover because sometimes staff can be a little shy about doing something because it's a tough decision to make. And that's kind of why the elected official thing, have to lead at times, because we make the decision based on the community and the risk, the risk that we assess, what we think is, is worthy of doing. And especially with the new information about children not transmitting COVID. And, and in Orange County, I believe in California, even no deaths related to, to COVID from, I got to get a doctor in here to give me the exact terminology, from someone who has no symptoms, make this program, I think, safer than other programs. We definitely encourage those who do have a grandparent or someone in the family to, to still consider the heightened reality or the heightened exposure that young adults can have, the same as if someone goes to a protest, there's going to be more exposure to, to that risk. But I think that we can mitigate the risk with what you said, our basically new protocols, which I'm sure you won't go into detail now, but I'm sure they also involve contact and some of the activities that they'll be doing. Is that correct?
Yes. To your point about raising additional funds, we're in some preliminary ideas of how to tap into some of our parents and our huge community support. So I agree with you on that. And I think there's a lot of options we can explore.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor and council, I am here to give you a brief update on the Small Business Relief Grant Program. And this is, of course, the program that the council authorized on June 1, using $2.1 million in coronavirus relief funds that the city received from the County of Orange. The program parameters that the council discussed and provided to staff included providing up to $10,000 in grants to small businesses in the city that need relief, to help them reopen and recover from the impacts of COVID-19. Staff took the parameters you gave us and we worked with the Small Business Development Center and built those out into a program. We've provided all of the information online at NewportBeachCA.gov/businessgrants. And there, interested business owners can find the full program guidelines that tell them exactly what the eligibility requirements are, the terms and conditions, the how to apply, and what they can expect after they apply. It actually goes through the timeline of how the program will be executed. The Small Business Development Center is offering two webinars to help our businesses learn more about the program. And we had the first one today and they had 250 registered. And the next one is Thursday morning at 11:00 a.m. For those businesses that can't participate, we are going to have the links to the recorded webinars on our website so they can go back and watch and hear the questions that were asked. The application window is tight. The applications will open this Friday morning, June 12th, at 8:00 a.m. And it will close, the program closes June 16th, next Tuesday, at 5:30 p.m. And that window is tight in order for us to be able to work with SBDC, review the applications, and meet the council's desire to get that money into the small businesses' hands as quickly as we can, since they need it as they're reopening. And that is the brief summary of the program.
And Ms. Brenner? Oh, a different issue?
Actually, my comment was on junior lifeguard program. So if anybody wants to talk about this first, then I'll make a comment about that.
Any other comments? Fantastic, thanks. And just for everybody, this is on our splash page at our homepage right now. So, all right, Ms. Brenner, go ahead.
And good job, Tara, on that. That was a quick turnaround that you've been processing there. On the junior lifeguard program, I just wanted to say that I think we got 1,100 emails on that program. And we've read all of them and we appreciate the passion that everybody has for that program. And it was actually fun reading most of those. But I know that you guys, our staff, were working hard to make this program happen even before we got all of those comments. And I know Jeff especially, having a son that is impacted by the event that he loves, the football career that he has, that he especially knew how disappointed the kids were going to be if they didn't get to do this. So I feel certain that you guys were doing everything you could to make this happen and with the county's direction, probably would have gotten there. But, and I also want to mention that although the public pressure was important, and it's nice to know how much everybody loves this program, including my family for, from almost the beginning, that that was not the deciding factor for you. That the deciding factor for you was that you could offer a safe program and that you knew that if you could do that, you wanted to do it and you were going to do it. So there are a lot of times that we can kind of sway you into things that maybe you might want to go a different direction, but I think if you didn't feel like you were offering a really safe program, it wouldn't have mattered how many emails we got or anything. And I, I appreciate that because I would have felt it would be difficult to vote for something that I didn't feel like you guys were absolutely as certain as you could be that it was a safe program. So I appreciate, I know your, your passion for kids and our passion for kids and all of the parents in our community. And we're just thrilled that you're able to make this program work.
Okay, any, anything else? Just a couple of things I wanted to follow up on, just COVID-related. We're still seeing, you know, we're seeing, compared to a month ago, we're still seeing relatively high hospitalization in ICUs. So I just want to remind everybody, please continue to take this seriously. It's, it's right around 5% of hospital capacity. So it's gone from about 4.6% to about 5% hospital capacity. So I just want to remind everybody, please continue to take your hygiene, personal hygiene carefully. Don't go into situations where you don't feel comfortable. Here in Newport Beach, it's, the city's been doing fairly well on all of those fronts over the last, I think I did the numbers. I think over the last 30 days, we've seen 29 positive cases in the city. That is remarkably low compared to a number of Orange County cities over in the same, same time period. And unfortunately, we continue to see skilled nursing facilities be the ones that are getting hit the hardest, particularly when it comes to the mortalities in our county. I think last time I spoke, we were, it was around 40% of the mortalities in Orange County have been from skilled nursing facilities. I think it's now up to 48%. It may have dipped a little bit today, but I think it's 48%, even though they represent only 10.8% of the positive cases. So I, I appreciate all the effort that our police, I'm sorry, that our fire department's doing, Hoag Hospital's doing, and the skilled nursing facilities inside of Newport Beach. But we still need to pay significant attention to that countywide and statewide, I would also mention. So anyway, keep going, Newport. I mean, we'll, we'll get through this. All right, let's go to public comments on this item.
Mayor O'Neill, Jim Mosher. First, I want to thank you for that note of caution, which I think is well-taken. I have three comments myself. First, of the 185 COVID deaths that Chief Boils told us about in Orange County, do we know how many, if any of those, were Newport Beach residents? And if we don't know that, why would that information be a secret? Second comment, sorry if I missed this, but as to the Small Business Relief Program that you're instituting with the very small, short window for people to apply, have all of the 18,000 business license holders that we were told at the last meeting, we have been informed of the program because I don't think we can count on them all to be looking at the city website. And then finally, of things that are not as they normally are, the last, this council meeting and the last one, the, the city's regular business has been started at an unusual hour, 5:00, 5:30 in the afternoon. I don't know if that's related to COVID in some way that I don't understand, but can we expect our council meetings to go back to the normal 7 o'clock starting time that people have expected before the emergency? And if so, when? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any calls? Okay, appreciate that. The answer is, we do not have a breakdown by city of where people have passed related to COVID. So we're not keeping it a secret. We don't have it. So the county has not released that data. All right, with that, Madam Clerk.
Motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
All right, any motion? All right, seeing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.